Hour being 7:00 PM on Monday, April 26, 2021. I'd like to call the order of the Laconia City Council meeting prior to anything. Now, I'd like to read the introduction for electronic meetings. As Mayor of Laconia City Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to watch the live YouTube video at www.youtube.com/LaconianH. Listen to this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-301-715-8592, or participate by the Zoom app. Webinar ID: 863-5827-1359. Password: 536444. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting. Using Zoom and instructions are provided on the City of Laconia's website at www.laconianh.gov. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call (527) 1265 (extension 243), or email at cityclerk@laconianh.gov. And D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taking during this meeting shall be done by roll, call, vote. Let's begin the meeting by taking roll-call attendance. When each member states his presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the state right-to-know law. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Counsel Chambers with two other counselors.
Counselor Susie?
Home and Alone.
Counselor Littman?
Home and Alone.
Counselor Haynes?
Counsel Chambers with two other counselors.
Counselor Hamel?
Counsel Chambers with two counselors.
Counselor Fauch?
At Home Alone.
Mayor Hosmer?
I am in Laconia City Hall in the mayor's office, and I am alone. Prior to going any farther, I'd ask Counselor Cheney, if you would be so kind, as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Cheney. Let me drop my pen. Okay. We are joined this evening by the aforementioned City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, by City Manager Scott Myers, and by City Finance Director and IT Specialist Glenn Smith. Under item number seven, which is the acceptance of minutes from previous meetings, the meetings, the minutes from the regular meeting of April 12, 2021, were distributed to the City Council on Wednesday, April 14, 2021, with no corrections or changes submitted to the clerk. The minutes will be accepted as distributed. Moving along to item number eight, under consent and action items. This is a request to approve a temporary traffic order 2021-03 for the Winnie Fishing Derby and to waive all fees associated with the event. April 7, 2021, the Special Events Review Committee approved the Winnie Fishing Derby application for this year's event. The temporary traffic order is attached. This is a recurring event. A request has also been submitted to waive all city fees associated with the event. The Daniel Webster Council of the Boy Scouts of America is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and proceeds from the fishing derby support scouting in New Hampshire. Motion we'll be looking for right now is a move to approve the temporary traffic order 2021-03 for the Winnie Fishing Derby as presented and to waive city fees associated with the event. So made by Counselor Fauch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative. That motion passes. Moving along to 8B, which is, the topic is Wake the Lake 2021, Block Party on Lakeside Avenue, a temporary traffic order 2021-04. A request has been received to hold Wake the Lake 2021 on Lakeside Avenue on May 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 2021. The event will be held from the hours of 5:00 PM on Friday, May 21st, 2021, to Sunday, May 23rd, 2021, to 5:00 PM. The special event application and map of the event are attached. The Special Events Review Committee approved the event at their meeting on April 7, 2021, and a copy of their notice of approval is attached. In addition, the organizer is requesting to extend hours of operation of sound equipment and/or loudspeakers for Wake the Lake 2021. Section 161-4 of the City's Code states as follows: "Notwithstanding the provisions of this section, no licensed outdoor sound equipment and/or loudspeaker shall be permitted to operate past the hour of 9:00 PM Sunday to Thursday and 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday, with the exception of Motorcycle Week, when such equipment shall not be permitted to operate past the hour of 12:30 AM, Sunday to Sunday. This provision shall not apply to the operation of any radio broadcasting station operating by virtue of a license of the Federal Communications Commission, or loudspeakers, or sound equipment operated exclusively with any building or other permanent structure." The organizer of the event is requesting that the time set forth in the ordinance above be extended till 11:00 PM. So... The city will be reimbursed, will be reimbursed for all associated costs with this. This was submitted, the report was submitted by Scott Myers, the city manager, and staff recommends that the organizer's request be approved as presented. Be looking right now for a motion to approve temporary traffic order 2021-04, Wake the Lake 2021, to allow alcohol consumption on city property in the designated areas only, and to extend the hours of operation of sound equipment and/or loudspeakers from 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM for the duration of this year's event. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Fauch. Be looking for any further discussion at this point on this motion. Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. That brings us to number nine on our agenda, which is, this is the opportunity for citizens to make comments for matters not on the agenda. If there are citizens listening in who would like to address issues that regard the city, and those issues are not on tonight's agenda, now would be the appropriate time. And Mr. Smith, I'll wait on your cue.
Mr. Mayor, Charlie St. Clair has raised his hand.
Welcome, Mr. St. Clair.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Thank you. And if I've got this wrong, please correct me if I, if you want me to wait till later on matters on the agenda. I'm not talking about the traffic plan for Motorcycle Week. I want to discuss what we discussed at the last meeting with regards to the vendor situation and the outside entertainment tent. So would you like me to discuss that now, or bring it up later?
Is it an item on tonight's agenda?
Not specifically, no.
Then you can, you may feel free to address it now, then.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to just revisit again the city's current limitations on the outside of the vendor tents. And right as it stands right now, the city is requiring a 15-foot space between tents. And for the life of me, I really, I guess I just don't understand what will be accomplished by that, other than, you must have gotten an email, hopefully everybody got an email that I had sent out from the board this past Friday. But again, just for the public and yourselves, by doing that, you're potentially limiting the number of vendors that we'll be able to set up in the city. And we expect a pretty good crowd this year. So what will in fact happen is that the crowd will end up being, or the crowd, the customers will end up being restricted to only a limited amount of tents, which will then increase, potentially increase the number of people at each tent versus letting them spread out everywhere. And the same thing would be, well, let me get, keep on that, on the boardwalk, by creating a 15-foot space there, we are creating a potential of people congregating between the tents to look at the view or whatever. And that, again, is not conducive to keeping people spreading out, doing what we want them to do. So I would encourage that the council revisit that, and perhaps just having the vendor set up just like we've had in the past. I'm sure I don't need to remind the council also, by having that 15-foot gap on the boardwalk, we will be cutting into the potential income for the city for the Motorcycle Week line item budget. And that is never a good idea, I don't think. The other item I wanted to talk about-
So, Mr. St. Clair, are you suggesting that vendor booths should be farther apart?
Not at all. I'm suggesting that we have it as we have in the past.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Sure. So the other item that I wanted to talk about is the outside entertainment tents for areas that normally do not have yearly outside permits for such activities. And we're really talking, I think, about three to four locations within the city limits. And again, we've all heard, I think everybody's heard, even from Dr. Fauci this weekend, that outside activities are the best for the airflow, for, you know, it's just, it lessens the impact of this virus. And by not having the outside entertainment tents, we are actually encouraging people, or not encouraging perhaps is not the right word, but we're pushing people to go inside of establishments. And unless something changes by May 7th, from what I've been told and conquered, the plan is to allow all outside, excuse me, all inside facilities, restaurants and lounges, to go back to full capacity. So what I would like to see the council do is allow the outside entertainment tents to be open. And I understand the concerns of some of the counselors, and that is perfectly logical to be concerned. So knowing that the fire department is required all outside tents to have a limited capacity, a noted limited capacity, and every one of these tents has to have a gentleman or a lady there with a clicker, counting the people that go in the tents and counting the people that go out, leave the tents, so they don't exceed their capacity. If the city is concerned about too many people inside of an area, they can certainly put a restriction on there, which can be, can be moved either way in the future, in the next month. Let's say, again, as I said last meeting, if the, if the tent has a 500-person capacity, the city council could say, "At this time, we're going to set the capacity at 250 people." And the council could even go further and say, "We want tables and chairs everywhere," if they felt that was necessary. But at least it would give the tents a chance to be open, relieve the load on the inside establishments, and again, they could set the capacity. And if things were to get better in the next month, then the capacity could be increased, or if, God forbid, things get worse, the city could pull back. And I know that there are some that think, "Well, it would be unfair to have a merchant or a property owner say, 'Gee, we let you set it up, but now we got to pull it back.'" Well, that's nothing new. That precedent has been, has already been established, and people would understand that. But by not doing anything, that is actually, I think, more harmful than that, than not.
So, Mr. St. Clair, are you saying if we open up outdoor beer tents, we'll de-densify the interior of establishments serving food and drink?
I think that it definitely has that capacity to do that. And I might remind everybody that-
So is that, what is that? I don't understand your answer. Is that a yes? We're going to, we're going to de-densify? There'll be fewer people in various indoor establishments if we allow outdoor beer tents?
I think that's, that is, yes, I think that is much more plausible that that will happen. That's the logic behind my request. And again, I just want to remind everybody, the people that are doing these beer tents are in fact the business owners themselves to, you know, do this business. So we're not, it's not like we've got an outside person coming into town with no business ties to the city that will be doing this activity. So we're helping the brick-and-mortar, if you want to talk, use those terms, businesses to maximize their business during Motorcycle Week.
And your suggestion is so long as, so long as it's not at 100% capacity, we are doing enough to mitigate the possibility of transmission of a virus, we'll say?
Well, according to Dr. Fauci, having stuff outside is a good thing. And if people are concerned about too many people in a tented area, they could certainly, again, we could limit the capacity to say, "Okay, we, we're going to, we're going to spread it out inside the tents."
But isn't a tent an indoor facility? It's got, the tent is going to have a roof, correct?
That's correct.
It's going to have, it's going to have exterior partitions that look like walls of sort, except maybe made of-
Well, sometimes, sometimes, listen, if that's where the city wants to look at that, that's fine, but you have to get a permit to have that outside tent, and those permits are what is being denied right now. So that's, that's what we're talking about. I'm just trying to, again, to move things outside as much as possible, because I think that's a good thing for every, all parties concerned.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for the clarification, Mr. St. Clair.
You're welcome. And, and again, this is something that, depending, depending on how things are going out there in the, in the world, we can, we can go on from that point.
So I don't expect you to speak for every one of the potential vendors, but you're talking about a percentage of capacity. You suggested, you know, 50% capacity at one point there. I mean, would the vendors be okay with 10% capacity to start?
I'm not talking about vendors on that. The vendors should be, the vendor area should-
I'm talking about the vendors who are, who are going to operate a beer tent.
You're talking about the property owners and not vendors. And, and again, that's just my, certainly not. I'm quite sure all the people want 100%. I'm just trying to let the council try to mitigate if they feel they need to mitigate.
Okay.
But at least have, at least have the tents.
Thank you very much. Great. Okay. Again, I appreciate your time.
Likewise.
Mayor, Peter Burnett has raised his hand.
Hi, Mr. Burnett, welcome. I think you're muted.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. City Manager Myers, my name is Peter Burnett. I live at 15 Park Street in Lakeport. I'm also the planning board chair, but I'm speaking in my capacity as a resident of Lakeport tonight. As you are no doubt aware, a major redevelopment project is going on virtually at my door. Approximately half of the city block is currently being excavated to make preparations for a rather sizable concrete and steel building. And I'm asking the city council to consider a special traffic order. I called the director of Public Works and asked him if he could post or tell the direct, the developers, the, excuse me, the construction people, to try to exit the property directly to Elm Street. I don't know if you've been in this neighborhood recently, but there are four streets here, one which is Four Street, mine, the middle one is Park, and then there's Railroad Avenue. And they are joined at the north end by Gold Street. The corner of Lakeport Avenue and Gold Street is generally a puddle. It's almost impossible to see the corner. There are no curbs, no markings, no street markings. And the marina that constantly operates down that street, because there's a storage facility where the fire station used to be, they're, they're taking huge forklifts on a regular basis. So basically, it's getting, the pavement's getting pounded. The lower half of Park Street, from my property line to Gold, is an absolute nightmare. Gold Street itself isn't very good. I've looked at the, what they're doing over there. I understand that right now is going to be the heaviest truck traffic, because there are 10-wheelers. Like this morning, I had a line of 10-wheelers in front of my house waiting to move to the site. I understand that they need to do that, but it's going to be a long time, and there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment involved. So I would really appreciate it on behalf of myself and the other few remaining residents here in this little neighborhood, in the village of Lakeport, to issue a special traffic order, maybe establishing a weight limit on these four streets, or simply just say, "No large vehicles beyond this point." I understand they would need to exit directly onto either Railroad Avenue or Park Street, which is what they're doing right now, but it's at the lower end, and they can take a left, they come out onto Park Street and go directly to Elm. So I would ask you to do that on behalf of my neighborhood. And then, secondly, I guess this is both as a, as a member of the public and a member of the planning board, we have a tax increment financing district here. It hasn't been active, I don't believe, since 2017. We are trying to get it up and running again. And what we're looking at is two parts of the TIF statute that might apply to this situation. One is providing assistance to relocate people, something we probably should have thought about before they were displaced. But I don't know how many people have been displaced by the redevelopment project next door to me. And secondly, to see if some incentives could be provided to developers to make infrastructure improvements, like for the streets and sidewalks and underground utilities, both here in this immediate area, but all within the district. So when that comes before you, if that comes before you, I would appreciate your support for, for that. I think it's a, and I haven't really spoken at length with my city counselor about it, but I see him nodding his head, so I guess I must be in the right ballpark. And with that, I will, probably to your utter amazement, stop speaking. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Burnett. And Scott, when you and I are out tomorrow in the city taking a look at another street, would it be possible to swing by this area of roadway that Mr. Burnett is talking about?
Sure. And if the council would just like to have consensus to have me work with Public Works Director and the developer, and just come up with a common sense approach, rather than waiting a couple of weeks to bring something back to you for the next agenda, I'm happy to take the lead on that as well, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That would be, that would be great. When I spoke with the director, it was the, actually the last day of the, the spring street closing signs. They were all coming down that day. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks very much. We'll swing by and take a look at it tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, Executive Counsel Joe Kenny has raised his hand.
Welcome, Executive Counsel Kenny. Glad you can be with us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Hosmer. Nice to see all the counselors and to see the city manager, Scott Myers. I just wanted to pop in just for a few moments. I've been stopping into the town halls and select meetings and city halls just to kind of give a quick wrap-up of what's going on at the council. First of all, there's a tremendous lot going on in Concord at this point. I just wanted to point out that we're in the process of hiring a new state fire marshal. Paul Parisi, a couple of meetings ago, resigned, and there's three finalists. If the mayor would like, I would like to bring maybe the fire marshal, the new fire marshal to Laconia, given that you have a lot of activity that's coming up that might require his assistance and his leadership. We also have a lot of boards and commission positions in state government that we're looking for at this point. So anybody who's looking to become a judge, see me. We're looking for judges to serve on our court systems. Right now, as you're aware, the council votes on a lot of your state contracts. Laconia hasn't had too much this spring. We've seen, obviously, the water revolving fund, which Laconia got 1.7 million earlier this year. We've seen a lot of renewals of lease agreements with regard to state-owned rail property. And we've seen a community development block grant of $500,000 come before the council to support Sunrise Towers and Sunrise House in Laconia. But currently, we're aware that stimulus package, I believe, Laconia is going to receive about $1.6 million. As of today, I have no inkling on what the administrative rules are going to be. The only clearance that I can get from the governor's office is that for local communities and counties, it's going to be fairly lenient. You just can't use it to offset taxes. So there should be some flexibility with that money. So we hope to, that those deposits will happen probably in the next three weeks. We have the 10-year highway improvement plan process will start later this summer. So I'll be holding a meeting at the City of Laconia to look at the 10-year highway improvement plan. Also, just for edification, there is a federal infrastructure plan that's still being worked on. We're fortunate that our Commissioner of Transportation, Victoria Sheehan, heads up ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highways, and is transportation official. So she's going to be a point person, both here in the state, but also nationally. So hopefully, we'll get some good information from her. Would also like to point out that we have a new Trails Bureau Chief, Craig Rennie, who is replacing Chris Kamash. So anything to do with trail system, we've got a new chief in regards to that. Other than that, the last point I would just point out is that the Lake Shore Redevelopment Commission is doing a great job. I guess they're meeting early in May, and there's legislation in Concord that's bouncing around. I think the House has amended so that the sale of state property would go through its formal process, which would be going before the Long Range Committee of Governor and Council, but more importantly, getting the input from the city and also from the commission itself. So with that, I open it up to any questions.
Thanks very much. Counselor Kenny, I think you've already touched on a couple of points that are close to us. One is the, the future of the Lake Shore Redevelopment Authority, as well as the property. It's trying to enhance the value, and I think they've done a very good job at it, and hopefully they're allowed to continue their work, and it goes through the more traditional processes of surplus properties, surplus state land. So that's, that's, I know, very important to all of us here. Certainly, we think it's a transformational piece of property, and the idea of looking at it from a holistic approach as to developing the entire portion, or not just the road frontage, is really important to maximizing the value, but also getting it back to the tax rolls, which it hasn't been on the City of Laconia for over 100 years now. So happy to have a follow-up conversation with you whenever, whenever you're in town or want to reach out. or want to reach out.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to ask Scott, Scott, are you getting a wrap-up reports from Governor and Council meetings?
I am, Councillor. Every, every two weeks, three weeks, does the meeting schedule I do, and I always peruse the agendas ahead of time and watch out for Laconia-specific items as well, but thank you.
You're welcome. And Mayor Hosmer, I, I will bring in the state fire marshal, so that's probably when the next time we'll meet, along with anybody else who'd like to join us.
Thanks. I really appreciate you bringing him here, and we certainly want to work through the city manager and the fire chief as well. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councillor Lippman.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Kenny, for coming and participating tonight. I was wondering if city manager, with respect to the Weirs Beach and the restoration of the beach, is there anything that you might want to share with Councillor Kenny with respect to Department of Environmental Services? We all set there?
I, I think we're set for the moment. That's going to start to rekindle what's fallen on the wayside a little bit with COVID, and we're looking to get that restarted. So certainly, you know, we'll, we'll reach out to Councillor Kenny at the appropriate time when we're working, because obviously, it's a very unique and large-scale project of restoration, probably not one that DES has seen the likes of. So it's probably going to be some new ground for them as well, but absolutely, we'll, we'll reach out to Councillor Kenny and bring him up to speed and have him participate where possible.
Remember, it doesn't have to take Motorcycle Weekend to get me over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Councillor Kenny? Seeing none, again, thank you very much, Councillor, for joining us. Look forward to seeing you face-to-face sometime soon.
The Mayor, Jose DiMatos, has raised his hand.
Mr. DiMatos, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Jose DiMatos, 1192, 1198, Weirs Boulevard, Channel Waterfront cottages in Weirs Beach Convenience and Gifts. I'm here to urge all our city councillors and mayor to fully reopen Laconia Motorcycle Week this June to 100% of the vendors and allowing outdoor entertainment vendors. Just this afternoon, the CDC ended their recommendation on even wearing fat face masks outdoors. The current seven-day moving average of daily cases has decreased 10.1% compared with the previous seven-day moving average. Compared to the highest peak on January 8th, the current seven-day average has decreased 74.9%. Our New Hampshire Governor Sununu is going to be announcing full capacity in all restaurants, bars, and lounges very soon. The outdoors are much safer than forcing everyone inside. Vendors at 100% is going to allow the city also the potential to maximize the vendor fee revenue, thus offsetting the expenses. At 50% of vendors, this will not occur. Please allow visitors to make their own decisions, whether they choose to or not to go into a vendor or even attend the event. I know that the public and your constituents have reached out to you and have overwhelmingly want 100% vendors and entertainment. You have wisely allowed Wake the Lake and should also please allow the vendors at 100% entertainment and beer tents. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. DiMatos.
Mr. Mayor, Brian Lynch has raised his hand.
I, just to be cognizant of the time, this is a very robust agenda for the city council tonight with the proposed budget. It's on the agenda, so I, I just want to make sure the comments are coming from people who are residents of the city, and I want to be, hold you to three minutes maximum, and please try not to repeat what other people have said. Anyway, go right ahead, Mr. Lang.
Thank you, councillors, Mr. Mayor, city manager. I would like to state first and foremost, now that you have said that, I am not actually a resident of Laconia. I'm someone who is a resident of New Hampshire. I frequent Laconia and the Weirs Beach area, and I have since I was a child. If you would like me to hold my comments now that you've put in those stipulations, I would be happy to do so.
Just please, if you could keep them brief, Mr. Lang, that's all I ask.
Yes, absolutely. So recently, it has come to my attention that there are active neo-Nazi and white supremacist hate groups that are becoming more and more active in New England and especially in New Hampshire and Maine. And recently, it came to my attention that this specific neo-Nazi and white supremacist hate group known as the National, the Nationalist Social Club of New England, who is known to the ADL and the FBI to have taken part in numerous violent acts and even the Capitol insurrection that happened on January 6th. They recently, as of April 16th, were posting up their neo-Nazi and white supremacist propaganda along Weirs Beach and in Laconia. And I just wanted to make the city councillors, the mayor, and any members of the public who might be listening to be aware of this and to look towards the future and the summer and Bike Week with all of these people and tourists and, you know, just the, the greater community that we want to invite to New Hampshire and be able to feel welcome and safe and enjoy the beauty here. I just want to bring awareness that they are active. They are out here trying to recruit in your community and communities that every New Hampshireite shares together and to actively just, just know that these groups are within our communities and to stand against them. I, I would ask that the Laconia Police Department looks into these acts and that the, the city council just makes a statement, you know, condemning this type of racism and virulent hatred that is rearing its head within your community.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. So noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, no other hands are raised.
Thank you. Moving on, on to our agenda here. City manager, if you just give me a little direction here, we're sticking to the agenda as printed here, correct? What's throwing me off is the 7:15 non-public I saw at one point there.
No, we're staying forward. That was just for reprogramming the Zoom, the, the iPads or tablets for people from the airport meeting at 6:15. We're reusing those for the non-public after. We just had to give it an awkward start time, but no, we're, we're just straight through on this regular agenda, yes.
Okay, that's all it took to throw me off, not much, but thank you. Moving along to number 11, under nominations and appointments and elections, Brett Beliveau is requesting appointment as a regular member of the planning board to fill the remainder of a term expiring at the end of June 2023. Mr. Beliveau is currently an alternate on the planning board, having served in the capacity for the past three years. He's applying to fill the remainder of a three-year term created by the resignation of former Planning Board Member Jewel Fox. Interviews of individuals applying for appointment or reappointment to various boards and commissions were held at the council's April 12, 20, April 12, 2021 meeting. Appointments will be made at this evening's meeting. Mr. Beliveau's application was included in the April 12, 2021 agenda. Right now, I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Brett Beliveau as a regular member of the planning board to fill the remainder of a term expiring at the end of June 2023. So made by Councillor Cheney, seconded by Councillor Hamel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I've asked the clerk to call the roll.
Councillor Cheney?
Yes.
Councillor Susie? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Lippman?
Yes.
Councillor Haynes?
Yes.
Councillor Hamel?
Yes.
Councillor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Beliveau, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Moving along to item number 13, under public hearings. Public hearing for Resolution 2021-05 relative to a proposed land swap and boundary line adjustment between Antaeus Holdings Limited and the City of Laconia and Declaration of a Portion of the City's, Portion of the City's Property, a Tax Map 367-189-24 is surplus. Notice of this public hearing was made available on April, in the April 14th, 2021 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, Community Center, and the SAU. Action on this item will be taken up under unfinished business. So let's open the public hearing at 7:40 PM, and if anyone in the public would like to address this matter, now would be the appropriate time.
Mr. Mayor? We, we do have a hand up. The hand that went up right after we closed citizen comments, so I'm not sure if it's for this or not.
Well, why don't we find out if it is?
This is Megan.
Megan, is this in regards to the public hearing for the resolution? Apparently not, so I will declare the public, the public hearing closed at 7:41 PM. Moving along to number 14, under presentations, 14A, which is the fiscal year 2022 budget presentation, and welcome again, City Manager Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know the mayor and councillors all received copies of the budget in their mailbox on Friday afternoon, so I'm sure you were all busy all weekend long going through every page, and you don't have any questions, but tonight is just going to be a highlight overview of the budget, what's driving it, how it went together this year under very unusual times, some of the unknowns that we'll be monitoring over the next couple of months. And as you've all seen, a, a schedule of department head presentations or dates anyway, and I'll be filling those in with the department heads and already have, and hopefully we'll be getting you a, a full calendar of not only those dates, but what departments will be presenting on those dates for you in short order. So we will have a busy month of May and into June on even our off Monday nights for some budget information. For folks at home, this, this document will be posted, the budget document will be posted online as of tomorrow morning, www.laconianh.gov. There will be a copy in the library. There also will be a copy in the city clerk's office. I've got Glenn Smith sharing a screen with a PowerPoint presentation, which will probably run through somewhere probably less than 10 minutes of the budget overview, and then we'll move on to other items on the agenda. So as you can see, as the mayor said, this is the revenue and expenditure plan for fiscal year 2022. Next slide. A number of unknown pieces. Councillor Kenny, Executive Councillor Kenny hit on it a few minutes ago and spoke about some of the funds that might be available through the American Rescue Act Plan, and we're still waiting for guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department on what those funds may or may not be allowed to be used for, backfilling lost revenue, supporting small businesses, supporting nonprofits, supporting travel and tourism, a number of things that we have questions on, and when I say we collectively, municipalities and counties across the state. So that is one of our unknowns right now. The second one is it's a, it's a state budget year for the biennial budget. So the House of Representatives has taken the governor's proposed budget. Governor Sununu came out with his budget in February. The House worked on it through crossover day, somewhere around the first week of April this year, I believe. They approved the budget at the, at the House level and moved it over to the Senate. The Senate always, because of the timing of it, has the benefit of working on the budget later in the cycle, and therefore, they have an opportunity to have additional information in terms of revenue updates on, on how the state is performing through business profits tax, through rooms and meals, through gas tax, alcohol sales, tobacco sales, and a number of other revenue streams that you can imagine have been significantly impacted over the past 12 months for obvious reasons. You know, I, I say at some of my department head meetings that, you know, gas tax is down this year, and that's the, that's the, you know, gas tax built into the gallons of fuel that people buy when everybody was working from home or businesses and schools were shut down last spring for a, a good period of time. We also had rooms and meals revenue was impacted significantly early on in this pandemic, has rebounded now, and there's a good possibility that the April numbers will actually meet projections for the first time in, in about a year right now. Ironically, or not, the two taxes that have exceeded revenue expectations are the alcohol tax and the tobacco tax. So if you want to know what everybody's been doing these past 12 months, that might give you a little bit of a, of a leading indicator. So we are waiting for the Senate to work through their budget and then go back and reconcile with the House, and we'll certainly be monitoring that closely for some of those revenue sharings of the, of the road funds that we get through the cash tax, also the rooms and meals distribution. The prior two-year budget had almost $400,000 to Laconia each year in revenue sharing. That is not in the governor's proposed budget, and at this point is not in the House budget, so we are awaiting those types of details to see what may come and then what opportunities there may be to backfill some revenues from the American Rescue Act Plan, which President Biden signed into law about six or seven weeks ago. So those are a couple of unknowns that obviously COVID is still with us. We still have impacts on finances, on operations, on PPE, on extra cleaning and sanitizing, and then we have to look at what possible expenses and/or reimbursements may be available to us, even though COVID is, is, is winding down to some extent where more people are getting vaccinated, there are still variant strains, there are still some, you know, regional and local outbreaks, as, as you've heard and read in the local papers recently. So we feel confident that we presented a very solid budget. There'll just be a few puzzle pieces that we may have to plug in along the way as we know more. Next slide, Glenn. So what does the budget contain? It contains major categories, obviously, our revenue projections, the city appropriation. So what's the city expenses going to be for the next 12 months? Same thing on the school department side, their appropriation. We have the state property tax assessment, which is the state education tax as well. And then we have the Bellknap County Tax Assessment. So all of those components go into it. It, it provides for the amount of revenue that we raise outside of property taxes, and then the amount of revenue that we need to collect from property owners through property taxes. Next slide. Along with all the city operations, a few enterprise funds, so the water department budget, sewer budget are found in there. The Internal Service Fund, which handles all the vehicle purchases, maintenance, repairs, and cost, is in there as well. Motorcycle Week Fund, the three tax increment financing districts, both for, for the downtown, Lakeport, and the Weirs, and also the ambulance EMS fund is set up as a special revenue fund where we track the expenses and they're offset by the revenue. Next slide. So this budget, like most budgets I've presented to you over the last 10 years, focuses on a couple of core areas. Number one, public safety. Second, education, infrastructure and maintenance of our bridges, buildings, roads, and then providing safe and affordable and quality water and sewer services. So this budget is really no different this year than it has been in past years. We are a tax gap community. Next slide, Glenn. So we are limited in the amount that can be raised through property taxes by two components every year. The first one is the inflation number, the Consumer Price Index number, and that's based on a calendar year 2021. That number came in at a very small level this year, at 1.2% for inflation. Basically, when COVID came in, in, in March and shut things down, the demand for goods and raw materials and, and people's incomes were impacted, so therefore, spending was impacted right away. So we saw all inflation immediately drop down basically to a, to a zero or slightly above zero level. Did start to tick up right at the end of the year, but again, for calendar year, we're at 1.2%, which that part on its own does not allow for a whole lot of growth within the budget. New construction value was a very positive surprise this year. We saw a lot of people who were staying at home, not only doing some smaller do-it-yourself projects, but people doing some larger projects, some people looking to relocate to New Hampshire for quality of life and getting out of cities and moving to more rural sections and coming in and investing in properties and doing, improving, in some cases, tearing down and rebuilding. And we also saw a couple of large projects pull permits, including the, the reuse of the Barton's motel space, also the Colonial Theater residential component of it, and then a variety of some new, you know, starter homes for folks who are just, you know, trying to save up to do a first home purchase and some million-dollar waterfront property. So it really was a mix across the board, but to put it in perspective, that $39 million, more than doubled the, the figure that we used last year at this time. So the value of those building permits at our current tax rate allows for the additional spending of the $769,000 that you see there. Next slide, please, Glenn. So first and foremost, in big letters, this is a tax cap compliance. So first and foremost, in big letters, this is a tax cap compliant budget. So the proposed increase in terms of the amount raised in property taxes is one point two percent. Next slide, by function, that means to stay within the cap. City spending on increase on property taxes can't exceed the five hundred and twenty-two thousand figure. On the school side, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. And if the county were subject to our tax cap, eighty-one thousand, even though the county is not limited by our tax cap. As your manager, I'm required to, to put the county component into the overall budget, which it is a part of. And our overall budget does need to be compliant with the tax gap. Next slide. So overall, on the city side, spending increases by about a million two fifty of four point five percent over the current year. School department spending excluding the federal and food service funds increases by a million sixty-nine thousand. The Bell Knapp County Tax Assessment decreased by a little over three hundred thousand. And we're projecting our revenues to increase, non-property tax revenues to increase by approximately three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And as I had already mentioned, the assessed valuation at a thirty-nine million dollar increase. Next slide. So what's driving the budget? Wages. We have four collective bargaining, bargaining units. And we also have a, a large component of non-union employees who work for the city. So wages, as the council is aware, with a couple of contracts you've approved already, and including one item on the agenda before you tonight. You've agreed to a one point eight percent increase, cost of living increase in one year, in two separate one-year contracts that you've approved for the ABSME group and the S C A group. So budget for those who are entitled to steps in the wages, on the, on the wage scale that they're on, includes steps. It also includes a one point eight percent cost of living adjustment. Health insurance came in relatively low for health insurance increase. I mean, no increase is better than having an increase, but three point three percent was the increase on our insurance. And our employees contribute depending on which plan they partake of, either ten percent of the cost or fifteen percent of the cost. New Hampshire retirement system really took a, a big chunk of, of our available cap space this year. Retirement system, and I know we touched upon this a few weeks back, so I won't belabor it, but made a, made a, a change in how they project what the returns are going to be over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years and using their actuarial statistics and working with the, the financial money fund managers who manage the ten billion dollars plus that's in the retirement system. And as everybody knows, interest rates are at historic lows and that's great if you're borrowing. It's not great if you need to, to receive income on a fixed income or through bonds or something like that. So within the retirement system portfolio, the, the fixed income or the bond portion is not generating anywhere near what historically it has done. So therefore, the Board of Directors, and full disclosure, I do serve on the New Hampshire Retirement System Board of Trustees, made a decision to reduce our resumed rate of return of the overall assets on an annual basis from the level of seven point two five percent to a level of six point seven five percent. So when you calculated that new assumption into the components of rate setting, it caused a rate increase because across the system, we are not assuming that the return is going to be as high as it once was. So that did drive rates on the city side alone, not the school. The increase was somewhere between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars across all employees who are part of the retirement system. And that basically is just about everybody. Capital outlay in the budget, we did have a slight increase. Again, we try to, to fund a number of capital projects with cash so that we can be maintaining a healthy ratio of cash purchases for capital items in the operating budget and not putting everything on the credit card, not debt financing. That makes a long-term strategic sense. We do borrow and bond money for large projects where it makes sense. But for some of the smaller recurring ones, paying cash is a prudent approach. So there is a small increase in capital. We do have the debt financing for the Elm Street Lakeport Project. Counselor Kenny had mentioned we had gotten a loan through the state water revolving loan fund for the water component of it there. Other priorities that, that took a, a large portion of the budget this year, the Colonial Theater. As you know, we were anticipated taking ownership of it as of January this year. So when you think about it, part of the cost of the Colonial were built into the budget that we're currently in and part of the cost for the Colonial coming up in next year's budget. So for items like rent payments to Bell Net B D C and the operating expenses of light, heat, insurance, cleaning, spectacle, management company, all of those need to be built into the budget that you have before you now. The big piece of that was basically a lot of the debt service hit in the fiscal year beginning July one. We had a small amount that was due in this fiscal year, basically was a partial interest payment and coinciding with when the bond was issued, but a large component. So the Colonial and retirement system really, really took up a, a lot of our, our cap space this year. Made it for a challenging budget year. Priority of the council is our field maintenance, taking care of our ball fields, our parks and everything. When we get to those particular department, that particular department, you'll see some increases in how we're structuring it there to be, being more aggressive with our, our field and park maintenance. Next slide, please, Glenn. Touched upon a few of these things, but you know, increases either in rooms and meals. We're hoping that the highway block grant distribution will be made whole in, in the budget. Also, some of the federal COVID funds to come in and backfill some lost revenues. We've still seen strong increase in motor vehicle registration. So we've adjusted that and done a small increase for next year's projection, building and zoning. We talked about a lot of projects in the works, so that was bumped up a little bit. We do have a one-time return of surplus through our pooled health insurance group, New Hampshire into local trust. So we budgeted some dollars that we anticipate receiving in fiscal year twenty-two. Our parking meter revenue last year was very strong. We bumped up that line item a little bit. And we continue to wean ourselves of the use of fund balance, albeit this year, a relatively small reduction and maybe just more of a token to keep us on a path of what I think is, is steady prudence. And congratulations to the council for eight or nine years in a row of reducing the use of fund balance, which at one time was over one point one million dollars, which has to be made up with new revenue coming in to flow back into fund balance. So it's good to try to wean ourselves down from that. And if approved within the budget as presented, we'll be down to a level of only seven hundred thousand dollars starting July one. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we will be, you know, working through with some additional recommendations once some more information comes out on budgets and, and federal dollars and how everything comes together with existing dollars. We're going to be making a recommendation to reallocate some surplus in health insurance funds this year to some of the capital needs that I was not able to fund within the budget. Looking to move some of the dollars that you just transferred out of the school teacher stabilization fund that the city held for a couple of years. And we just recently moved to the non-capital reserve account, again, to fund some smaller capital projects that were not able to fit into the budget for reasons I've mentioned. And then we'll have some of the routine carry forward recommendations that we do every year for some projects that are, are midstream or maybe haven't started yet, but we still looking to do sometime later this calendar year. Next slide, Glenn. Again, starting tomorrow morning, the budget can be found, found on the website, a print copy available in the library or the city clerk's office. Next slide. I mentioned we'll be working through department head presentations. So the school is our first one up on May tenth, and then other department heads will be presenting their budgets and giving you more detailed information. And we certainly welcome the, and, and, and request the input and guidance and direction from the mayor and the city council, along with all of our residents to take part, public hearings, citizen comment opportunities, emails. We really welcome and encourage the participation. And the last slide is just a thank you to everybody who worked on the budget, my department heads in particular, but also the Laconia School Board does yeoman's work with the school administration. And then compiling everything together is our finance director, Glenn Smith. And he really ties it all out and puts together a great document for us to work on. So thank you to Glenn. So I can stop there and take any questions of the general nature, if anybody has any.
Thanks very much, Scott and Glenn, and, and your respective teams in putting together this comprehensive budget that I look forward to going through the next few meetings. I think it's really a terrific deep dive into city finances. So thanks again. I look to my fellow counselors right now. Any questions or feedback at this point? Counselor Susie.
Yeah, just one quick question, Scott. Will it be, when will we be issuing a calendar for us to?
I think I sent one out at the end of last week with dates and times, and I'm working with department heads to plug in. So I can resend that. I'm probably going to resend it to you by, hopefully by Wednesday of this week with the blanks filled in. But I, I, I'll make sure you got the, the first one and then we'll, we'll plug in the dates. But basically, the, the, the first presentation will be at a six o'clock start on our next meeting. So May tenth will be starting at six o'clock, and that will be with the school department. And they will present between six and seven, and at seven, we will go into our regular meeting start time. But I will make sure everybody has the updated calendar no later than Wednesday of this week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselor Susie. Counselor Littman, are you, are you raising your hand to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Please.
So I guess one of the things I want to talk to with the full council here and the manager, I assume would agree with us that based on this being a state budget year, that we want to consider taking our vote as late as possible to incorporate all of the understanding of the state budget and its influence on our budget. Can you refresh us, Mr. Manager, about what date that might be?
Sure. So that's, so that's on the bottom of the document.
Hold on one second there. Megan, you, could you mute your device, perhaps?
Glenn?
Glenn, you can mute that, mute that as well, please.
Should be all set.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Littman. So on the document that I sent out with the schedule at the bottom also includes when we would be holding a first reading of the public hearing and then holding the public hearing and a second, I'm sorry, of the budget documents, and then holding the public hearing and then have a second reading of the budget documents. That will occur on, on the June fourteenth meeting, but no action needs to be taken. It's procedural to be able to, to have the public hearings, allow the public to chime in. So our, our schedule of department head presentations runs runs through our meeting on our regular meeting date of June fourteenth. We've scheduled a special budget meeting just to focus, you know, solely on what you've heard, your questions, your proposed amendments to the budget for June twenty-first. And then we have one of three potential budget adoption dates, which could be June twenty-eighth, July eighth, and July twenty-second. So it's all listed there. And by charter, the council can adopt the budget as late as the fourth Monday in July, which would be that July twenty-second date. We do start a fiscal year on July one. It'll be business as usual. The only thing that I, as your city manager, would not release and make funds available for would be any of the capital items, because I'd want to make sure that they were contained in the final budget. But a, a wait of three weeks past the start of the fiscal year is, is really insignificant in terms of releasing those dollars on the capital project. So those, those are the dates that we're looking at, Counselor Littman.
I, on the, the June twenty-first date, I think that the final committee of conference at a state level is like June twenty-fourth, if we want to plan around when we know what the that's going to be as opposed to having to wait till the second one in July, maybe before the end of the month, have another special meeting.
Yeah, so the June twenty-first would be a special meeting. June twenty-eighth is a regular meeting date for us as well. So we have an opportunity to address whatever might happen there. So this, the, the schedule could be very flexible. So depending on what happens with the legislature and the budget and how everything shakes out there, we can be flexible in amending it. We are, like I say, we're, we're scheduled, you know, somewhat firmly to have the department head presentations completed by June fourteenth. But beyond there, we can be as flexible as we need to.
In terms of the, both the American Rescue Plan funds and the and potential valuation increases beyond what's assumed so far, could you just comment on those two things a little bit more, please?
Yeah, so the American Rescue Fund, as Counselor Kenny mentioned, I think the city is slated to receive somewhere in the ballpark of one point six million dollars. That can be used for COVID-related expenses. It could be used to support economic development, travel tourism initiatives. We believe it's going to be allowed to backfill revenue shortfalls from the last full year that we had. So the timing of, the timing of the, of the pandemic part of it hit in fiscal year twenty and continuation in the fiscal year twenty-one. So we'd be looking back to the last full unimpacted year of fiscal year nineteen for revenues. So I think I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, or maybe it was the last meeting. For instance, our ambulance revenue really took a hit the last twelve months and just people not choosing to call nine-one-one or not choose to go to the hospital, you know. So if there's an opportunity to make up for some of the revenue that we didn't realize in the upcoming state budget, you know, we could be impacted on, you know, the rooms and meals, or we could be impacted on the gas tax distribution for the reasons I've already mentioned. So the American Cares Act might be able to come back, back and backfill revenue shortfalls there. The, the revenue sharing that we received, all municipalities received from the state the last two years, again, Laconia was about three hundred and ninety-two thousand a year. There might be an opportunity to, to backfill that loss in state revenue sharing over this budget, the next budget. The language states that the funds, Glenn, help me out. I want to say they need to be expended by the end, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four is the year. So we, we don't have to rush. We can look at what makes sense now and, and how we might map it in, phase it in over the next couple of years. Because obviously, as, as you all know, it's a two-year state budget. So whatever the impact is, good or bad, in year one, it's a similar impact in year two. So we do have some flexibility with these funds for about two and a half years. And, and, and these are the funds I'm referring to from the American Rescue Act. And the second, second part of your question, Counselor Littman, I forget.
The, the valuation that's based on now versus what might come to pass.
Sure, sure. So as we all know, the real estate market has been, has been very hot. And while we have thirty-nine million dollars in new building permit value and similar, last year we had around nineteen million. As you recall, when the auditors presented the final statistical update back in the fall and what the valuation was that we were using in our tax rate setting, we were up around a hundred and fifty million dollars just due to market-driven conditions. So that made the tax rate go down, which is always good. People like to hear the tax rate goes down. But all of our properties collectively, all things being equal, increased in value. So therefore you had more thousands in value on your property to pay taxes on, but the tax rate went down. So you'll probably hear me say a few times along the way, the, the tax rate means nothing because whatever tax rate you end up adopting in June or July, we won't have done the statistical update yet. And chances are beyond the thirty-nine million dollars in new value that we believe will come online just from the building permits, there'll be value that's just generated from a strong real estate market when they do the comps on the sales and they, and they adjust certain types of properties and certain neighborhoods and residential and commercial and everything in between. So expectation is that we would see an increase of more than thirty-nine million dollars in our total citywide assessed valuation next fall when we start working with the Department of Revenue Administration to set the tax rate. Far too soon to know what that is because the assessing year just closed on March thirty-first. And that's where they kind of draw the line in the sand. So assessors, you know, that end of March, first of April are going out and looking at construction projects. So if you've got a house that's halfway completed on April first, we're trying to capture the value of what a half-completed house is worth at that time. You know, if you've got something that's ninety percent complete, certainly going to capture that versus something that just might be a foundation in the ground. So you've got to pick a line somewhere, a date somewhere, and that's that April first date. So we kind of go out and, and snap pictures and do a lot of legwork right now. And then our assessors will start looking at all of the sales that have occurred over the past twelve months and compare them to, you know, other neighborhoods, other properties, and really, you know, work through a lot of iterations to come up with new assessed valuations that will be coming out with the, with the tax bills the second half of the year. So the November tax bill that's due in December. So yes, but we would expect, you know, my crystal ball says yes, definitely an uptick in the assessed valuation citywide again this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Littman. Any other questions or comments for city manager at this time? Seeing none, again, thanks, Scott. I will offer up my time under the mayor's report right now because we do have a, a pretty significant agenda. So I'm happy to move right along to council comments at number because we do have a pretty significant agenda. So I'm happy to move right along to council comments at number 16 on our agenda. Do you have any council comments this evening? Seeing none, do we have any committee reports? Under number 18, do we have any liaison reports this evening? Seeing none, move right along then to number 19 for citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. This is an opportunity for Laconia citizens to speak about current agenda items. I would request, when possible, to not repeat what's already been said if you're concentrating on a certain topic. And we're going to try and keep our comments, so your comments, to three minutes. So I'll wait on your cue, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, Charlie St. Clair has raised his hand.
Mr. St. Clair.
Good. Thank you very much. Quickly, I hope that the council will consider having the Motorcycle Week traffic plan the same as it was two years ago. Again, I feel with the crowds that we expect, the traffic we expect, it would be much safer to have everybody going one way, not exiting back out on Route 3, and also to have as much parking available as we can for our visitors on motorcycles without a mix of cars and also have the centerline parking. That's it. Thank you for your time and thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. St. Clair.
Mayor, Megan has raised her hand.
Welcome, Megan.
Hello?
Welcome.
Good evening. Well, it's our opinion that people are coming, no matter what, they're coming.
So Megan, can I ask you to keep your comments to an agenda item at this point? If there's an item on the agenda, maybe reference it so we know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, I'm sorry, Motorcycle Week.
Which item on the agenda?
Well, I would like to, I raised my hand for not on the agenda, but I wasn't called, so I must have been missed. But I wanted to talk about the having centerline parking and the traffic pattern.
Okay.
Like we had it two years ago. It would mean a lot to us and all the local businesses and more importantly, to the safety of all of you who are attending. If you don't mind if I say something about the other thing, because I wasn't called.
Why don't we keep, if you could, I'm sorry, Megan, but if we can keep our remarks to items on the agenda at this point, that would be appreciated and allow us to get through the agenda in a timely fashion.
Okay, my hand must have been missed, but okay.
My apologies.
It would just mean a lot to us to have the centerline parking and the traffic pattern like before.
Terrific. Well, thank you. Thank you for joining us and thank you for taking the time to comment on the issue, Megan. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The mayor, Lynn, has raised
Lynn. Welcome, Lynn. If you could introduce yourself and let us know where in the city you live.
Sure, Lynn Bjorkman on Wentworth Cove Road.
Oh, terrific. Glad you could join us.
Thank you. Tony Felch, Councilor Felch, had spoken to us, and I'm actually one of the property owners that's been affected by the new no parking signs. I wasn't aware of this until they went up. I'm at 100, which is directly at the end of the, where 91 is the last one. And it's prohibited on both sides. I'm a little confused as to why they went up. I've heard rumors that there was a parking problem. I think you're familiar with the area. It's a very wide road. I bought the property. I'd love to be able to have company over, and this was not part of the agenda that I had anticipated. I guess there's a proposal that if we could limit it to one side, I'm not sure why we did what we did for a double-sided parking. I mean, is this something for discussion? I don't want to berate the point. I take my advisement from you as to how we should proceed.
Well, it is an item on the agenda, and I think it will be addressed at that point. But certainly, your opposition to it, I hear you loud and clear, though.
Should I defer it to the later part of the agenda? I didn't realize. I thought it was in 19.
Well, we are on number 19, and I take it you're commenting on an item on tonight's agenda, which is under number 21E.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're doing great. This is the appropriate time for you to speak up, Lynn.
Okay, perfect. I don't see a reason for there to be limited parking on both sides. I know it's a beach access issue. There's a vacant lot across the street from the beach, which seems to be the genesis of this issue. And I'm proposing strongly to deny no parking on both sides and limit it to one side of the road.
Terrific. Thank you very much for joining us, Lynn, and weighing in on the issue. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, Jose DeMatos has raised his hand.
Welcome again, Mr. DeMatos. Mr. DeMatos, are you with us?
He's unmuted.
Mr. Smith, we may have a technical difficulty on this end there, maybe?
I show that he's unmuted, so I think we're all set on this end. I'm not sure. Something might be happening on the other side.
Okay. Is there anyone else? While we get that resolved, is there anyone else with his or her hand up?
Yes, Sandra has raised her hand.
Okay, why don't we go to Sandra? Welcome, Sandra.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sandra Weddergreen. I live at 24 Woodvale Drive. And Lynn, who just previously spoke, I am also a part of that beach access on Wentworth Cove Road. There's actually 44 homeowners who have that ability to use that. And I would just like to convey to the council that there are members and people who live in the community there who live upwards of a mile from that beach. And it's a hardship for us to get down there if we're not able to park. That we have disabilities, we have cancers, we have young people, we have elderly people, we have families who have to get children down there. And the taking away that ability to park really hinders our ability to be able to use that area. So I would like you to consider, as Lynn stated, possibly having the parking on one side of the road.
Thank you very much, Sandra. I appreciate you joining us and weighing in on this issue.
Thanks.
Hi, Jose DeMatos here. Can you have me now?
Can hear you now, Mr. DeMatos.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring up very quickly the guidance on the temporary traffic order for Motorcycle Week event to be held June 12th through the 20th. I fully support that the council accept this traffic order, as it has been for many years, for everyone's safety and convenience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other requests, Mr. Smith?
Yes, R. Nato has raised her hand.
Attorney Nato, is that you?
Okay, hello?
Attorney Nato, is that you?
Yes. Hello, could you hear me?
Very well, welcome. Nice to have you.
Thank you very much. You folks were generous enough with your time a couple of months ago regarding this matter, but I really think it's important to give a little more background to what's going on. There's no disagreement that this area of 45 to 50 parcels of land were granted a right-of-way on Wentworth Cove Road. There's no dispute there. And I represent a handful of the owners that are on that road, and it hasn't been a problem up until about the past five to eight years. But what nobody seems to be talking about is this has been an ordinance that has been in effect since 1975. What we were asking was to enforce this ordinance, especially around where my clients' houses are. So rather than try to give my clients, who have, you know, had every right to enjoy what their families have enjoyed for all these years, the proposal on the table tonight is to actually do a 180 from what the ordinance has said for 50 years. And I don't see that there's any impelling public need to do that. It worked fine up until five years ago. People can certainly drop off there. But the other problem, which I raised the other night, was that there are people coming that have nothing to do with this subdivision. And my clients have witnessed it. They've spoken to people from Alton, and they've spoken to people from Wolfboro. So this would be similar to going into any small neighborhood and just saying, we're going to open this up now after 50 years, and we're going to allow all this parking and what you and your families had enjoyed. I mean, a lot of these people, you know, their parents owned these homes. And now what we're talking about is bumper-to-bumper parking. Some people are residents of the subdivision, some are not. But it really seems unfair to open this up to a type of public area in such a remote area of the city. And it does adversely affect my clients' use and enjoyment of their property and the value of their properties.
Attorney Nato, and how many people do you represent in that area?
I represent three owners of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parcels of land. And especially within the area that we asked for the no parking signs. But it's just interesting that this road specifically was designated for no parking. And yet, the other roads within this subdivision, you are allowed to park on. So there was clearly, you know, a mindset back then to avoid this exact problem. And again, it worked fine for years. It just, to me, doesn't make sense if you can think of any of your places where your homes are, where it's been posted for no parking, to then turn it into a place that could actually park based on what this proposal is.
All right. In the respective time for others who might want to speak, I'm going to cut you off right there, but I certainly appreciate you weighing in and letting us know your position in regards to this issue. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, Rich McNeil has raised his hand.
Miss Rich McNeil, welcome.
Thank you. You hear me?
Can hear you quite well. Whereabouts are you calling from?
Okay, my name is Rich McNeil Marison of 47 Rolling Lane in the Wentworth Cove Association in the old days. And I have deeded access to the right-of-way. It's a beach that everybody seems to have an issue with. And I guess I have a little concern, because in the last two weeks, I've driven through there frequently and tried to access the right-of-way and couldn't, because the landscape, commercial landscape folks that were working on clients on both sides of this right-of-way had blocked the right-of-way with multiple vehicles parked in the street. So if we're going to have no parking down there, will this affect commercial vehicles?
Sir, I can't answer that at this point. I'm not sure who can, but maybe wait until the time when the issue comes up for discussion later on in the meeting. Do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
No, my only fear in this is this could turn into a huge issue with, as far as enforcement. If I can't access that for, because a commercial landscaper's been there for four hours in front of someone abutting this right-of-way that lives there, that, to me, is you've just affected what I paid taxes on for a deeded right-of-way.
Certainly, I would suggest maybe a proper recourse, perhaps a proper recourse at that point would be to the police department for a non-emergency matter, maybe able to enforce something. But I certainly hear what you're saying.
I'll just make one more comment. Rather interesting, now that all this has come to light, in the Manchester Union Leader on Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, an article, "Dublin Considers Parking Ban at Lake." And the claim seems to be that the lakefront owners do not want local residents to access the town beach anymore. And I quote, the vice chairman of the planning board made the comment, there are those who want to privatize the lake and shut it down, basically no peasants allowed. I hope we're not headed that way with this one.
Appreciate your input, Mr. McNeil. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The mayor, Patty Morris has raised her hand.
Patty Morris, thanks for joining us. If you could let us know where you're calling from?
Yes, actually, I'm calling from Woodvale Drive as well. I live at 24 Woodvale Drive in Laconia. And I just purchased our home back in 2015 with my sister, who actually happened to speak a few minutes ago, Sandra. And we have grandchildren that come up and stay at our home. And I have a one-year-old grandchild, a three-year-old grandchild, and a six-year-old grandchild. And with the no parking down there, it's just about impossible for us to be able to get down to our beach rights, which was a huge factor for us to move into the community. We've been coming up to Laconia for over 30 years with our family. And five years ago, we made, almost six years ago now, we made a decision to purchase a home in Laconia because we found the perfect home for both of our families to share with our large family. And so I really think that this no parking needs to be reconsidered and at least make it a one-way or on one side, I should say. Again, because how do you take a two-year-old or a three-year-old that you're potty-training and you need to get back to your house quickly if there's no car or access for them to get back to the house? As well as, again, sick people that live in the home, there is someone in the home that has cancer. And if she needs to get back to the house because she is sick, how is that fair for her to not be able to be at our beach rights that we pay taxes for?
Appreciate your input and certainly raise some interesting issues. Thank you very much, Patty. It's nice to have you in the city of Laconia.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Debbie and Chris Cost have their hand raised.
Welcome, Debbie and Chris, or both of you, one of you?
Can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
Can hear you very well. Is this Chris Cost?
Yes, it is, sir.
Terrific. Where are you calling from?
I'm calling from 45 Woodvale Drive in Laconia, New Hampshire. I am part of the Wentworth Cove Estates in regards to this no parking situation. Both my wife and I, we've lived in this neighborhood for 25 years. And we have occasionally, but not often, we've occasionally accessed our lakefront access, our beach rights to Lake Winnipesaukee. And for some reason, there was never seemed to be an issue in regards to the parking down there. My wife and I, we have four dogs. We take them down there. We take them down in our vehicle. Never seemed to be an issue. All of a sudden, now, within the last two, three years, this seems to be an issue. I don't understand why. Our neighborhood area has gone through a transformation with a lot of families, with a lot of children, elderly people that have access to this waterfront. To, you know, do this no parking really inhibits a lot of these people, especially these mothers with children. They go down in their minivans to have the children go on the beach and enjoy it for the day. Elderly residents that have to drive down there versus walking a mile. I really think this is just a really, really inconvenience. And I would really hope that the city council will take into consideration of revising this ordinance to have parking on one side so that these people, along with ourselves, can access the beach when we want to. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cost, for your input this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for your awfulness in hearing this.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, no other hands are raised.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Moving right along to Thank you, Mr. Smith. Moving right along to number twenty, which is the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One hand just went up.
Ah, okay. Would that be Lynn?
That would be.
Didn't Lynn already speak?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Oh, very well. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm also, um, I should have identified myself. I'm also an attorney as well as a resident there in licensed in Massach- in Massachusetts. Um, I just wanted to um, add one more, a couple more comments. One, I think this problem has been exacerbated because of COVID, because a lot of people were in their homes. So I think the beach was used with more frequency than had been in the past, which I don't think is going to be the case going forward when people return to work, kids are in school. Um, so I do think that maybe that was a pushing point. I think where the parking signs have been, all they're doing is pushing the problem down the road. I understand who Attorney Nado represents. And basically what the council has done is put no parking signs in front of her clients' homes and essentially pushed it down to my house and further down. I don't have an issue with people parking on the road. I happen to be a resident. Um, I've never seen anyone leave a car overnight. I don't see the bump in a bumper traffic. I appreciate what Attorney Nado is saying about property values. As a homeowner there, I don't think I agree with her. I know I don't agree with her because I observe it. I'm there Thursday night through Monday mornings usually. And I don't share her view that it is a bump in a bumper problem. And I think that we're just pushing this problem down the road by stopping it at ninety-one. And if you go further down, you're going to limit all of Woodvale. And I don't think in the interest of of the public access, it's not a fair decision.
Thanks very much, Lynn. I appreciate your input.
Mayor, at this time, no hands are raised.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Then moving right along to item number twenty, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you have two reports in your agenda packets. Uh, I'm going to be about thirty seconds here and I'll take any questions. But basically, we're in the area of Mechanic Street, starting with Water. Uh, we'll be out in the area of Lakeport Franklin Street area and stuff doing sewer um, soon after that. And those are the uh, the major road projects. We have a few minor road projects we're working. I know an area, a section of Shore Drive was paved today. We also have an area on Wris Boulevard, um, and the area from the Nazwa um, down to the Roundabout and also Franklin Street will be getting some work um, this spring construction season. Uh, on the economic development report, inflation number, again, as I mentioned, with the budget, starting to tick up a little bit, still in a very reasonable range. Uh, two-point-six was the month of March, so a third of the way through the year. We're averaging one-point-nine percent inflation. Now, take any questions on the reports or anything else councillors may have.
The questions or comments from councillors? Councilman?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Manager. In terms of the the roster streets to be addressed, when would that be uh, fully public?
Um, it's public now for what we're doing with existing dollars through this construction season and meeting through June thirtieth. Um, and we're, we're, we're working on the list of potential now that I presented the budget and and Public Works Director Wes Anderson and Assistant Director Crystal Larson know the targeted dollar amount. They'll be firming up the list of projects above and beyond the big projects that we're doing for the work that'll happen post-July first. So I would, I would expect that a couple of weeks, we would have something um, available that at least give us a sense of what's going to occur with available dollars.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Hamel?
Yeah, thank you. Scott, I was just wondering when uh, uh, or if you have a timeframe, when they're going to fix the entrance and exits on Court Street Bridge? Especially the exit where the gas station is. That's pretty bad right there.
Yeah, I believe when I spoke to Wes about that last week, uh, I know the uh, the asphalt plants are open up full gear right now and I think Wes is on board. I want to say he told me possibly as soon as Thursday um, this week, weather permitting, and I don't know if we're um, still good with that, but it's, it's, it's sooner rather than later, much sooner rather than later. I can assure you that.
Okay, are they going to address the sidewalks there too, or is that going to be at a later time?
Um, we'll, we'll make sure that they're passable and and cleaned up and and good to go for the timeframe. I don't know if there's significant work happening on the sidewalk, but that one, that one big um, dip that everybody kind of swings around to avoid is definitely um, in the sooner rather than later category.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, uh, Scott, and we'll move right along to new business. Number twenty-one on your agenda. Out of twenty-one A is easement to construct a new drainage outlet from Franklin Street to Opechue Street. Um, Public Works in order to improve the drainage along Franklin Street from Washington Street to Fairmont Street needs a new drainage outlet to Lake Opechue. Uh, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services regulations require the city to install some form of water quality system to treat stormwater before it goes into a water body. Public Works has been in discussions with BDKS LLC, the owner of forty-two Franklin Street, to obtain an easement for the new outlet to Lake Opechue to conclude the stormwater treatment system. BDKS LLC has a group-
If, if, if you'd like, I can probably explain it with the use of a map rather than you reading that entire paragraph for us.
I would love that.
Okay, so happy to do so. So council would turn to page forty of the agenda packet, or it would be the sixth page of that particular item, and you'll see a map. And basically, that's Franklin Street. Um, so the area we're highlighting says easement area. That's owned by forty-two Franklin. Um, I think that's the address, but the, the reference that the, the mayor just made for BDKS LLC, they're willing to grant us an easement there so we can properly collect the drainage that comes off the streets through the stormwater system, treat it properly before it goes into the lake. And you'll see the area marked Paper Street. There's a little sliver there that was on a developer's lot years ago that the city never accepted, never constructed. We're not even, we, legal research says we don't even own it, although we probably have a right to access it type of thing. So um, very simple swap. Um, the owners who own everything um, in that big yellow highlighted area also own the property just to the right of where it says Paper Street. So for them to be able to make this a more contiguous parcel by the city giving up any rights to that Paper Street under a quitclaim deed make a lot of sense. That also offers up some great potential going forward um, for a potential reuse of that site without having that little sliver out of it in the middle. So we think it's a win-win for potential um, better use of that site going forward by someone who already owns all the property around it. We get the easement we need to do the road project correctly. And um, we're not sure that we even own it anyway. Um, so that's what's basically before you, and that's why um, we're not going to a public hearing for selling property because it's not property that legal research believes we own. We just have a right to access it should we choose to. But staff strongly recommends this makes sense for the reasons that I've just outlined for you.
Thank, uh, thanks very much. Estimated cost to complete? Documentation is two thousand dollars, paid for by the city's annual road maintenance program, correct? So I think right now, um, a recommendation uh, from Wes Anderson, and it sounds like you, Scott, is to approve the Public Works request to quitclaim lot three sixty-six slash eighty-two slash five in exchange for a drainage easement on the west end of B BKS property at forty-two Franklin Street. So uh, the first motion we're looking for here is a move to waive a reading of the quit claim deed in its entirety and to read by title only. So made by Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Whitman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Exposing the affirmative, that motion passes. Second motion is a to move the city council to approve the quitclaim deed for lot three sixty-six slash eighty-two slash five and authorize the city manager to sign the deed. So made by Counselor Felch and seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Counselor Hamel, I see you're unmuted. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, Scott, um, way back when, probably twelve years ago, um, we did an asset, uh, assessment of all our surplus property. And uh, that one there was on the list. And we actually tried to sell that piece of property um, along with others around the city that were, you know, very small parcels to try and merge them with other uh, buildings in the area. So I'm not sure if there's a um, any deed to that to the city. But I do remember, uh, the city council looking into that piece of property along with others uh, in the area. I don't know if Henry remembers it or not, but um, I, I think that's the piece that we looked at.
So the twelve years would have been before my time, and I'm not doubting that it's been on a list. Um, but again, I think sometimes, as you know, there are paper streets that show up in developments, but if they don't get constructed and formally accepted, that's all it is. And, and really, the land would either revert back to the original developer or after a period of time, you know, to the center of the road for abutting property owners. And in this case, it's the same property owner, and we never show it being accepted for the city having any right. And we have researched that legally and our legal counsel confident that um, this is the process we should do.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Whitman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you. Moving along to item twenty-one B. Request to designate no parking on both sides of Clinton Street from Union Ave to Mechanic Street. If I'm not mistaken, we have a handy map here as well, which would be on page forty-two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Susie.
I, I, I'm not sure if this is the right time or not, but I'm going to be asking the council to table this matter at this time until uh, and then more discussion with the property owners, because I've received information from both of them that want to have some more discussion, myself and Mr. Anderson.
If your motion is to table, it's not debatable. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Haynes. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll. Further discussion? Otherwise, no discussion. I'm going to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Whitman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that mo- that motion is passes and item twenty-one B is tabled. Moving along to twenty-one C, which is first reading of resolution twenty-two-one dash oh-six relative to the issuance of a bond to reimburse the city for certain property purchases. In twenty-twenty, the city purchased property at thirty and fifty Church Street and associated parking areas from the Roman Catholic Bishop of Manchester for one-point-one-three million dollars. The thirty Church Street property is since sold for four-hundred-and-forty-seven one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. As per prior council votes, it is anticipated that the fifty Church Street property will be sold as well. The city intends to retain ownership of the parking areas as a long-term asset. It is proposed that a bond with a term of ten years be issued covering the remaining balance of approximately six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars to distribute the fiscal impact of the purchase. The exact fiscal impact is conditional on interest rates at the date of issuance, given recent experience. An interest rate of approximately two percent is anticipated. With this assumption, the project projected interest costs associated with this bond over the ten-year proposed term is seventy-five thousand dollars. City manager recommends approving the attached resolution authorizing a bond in the amount of six-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, a thousand dollars, excuse me. Um, proposed motions, we have three of them. First is to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read by title only. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Whitman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor-
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Looking for a second motion here to move a first reading of resolution twenty-two-one dash oh-six relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city for property acquisition in the amount of six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any further discussion? See, seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Whitman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Third and final motion is a, is a motion to schedule a public hearing on May tenth twenty-twenty-one during the regular city council meeting regarding resolution twenty-two-one dash oh-six relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city for property acquisition in the amount of six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. Motion made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Susie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Whitman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving on to twenty-one D. This is a discussion pertaining to the Colonial Theater stage repairs at the April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one council meeting. Counselor Hamel mentioned that the stage at the Colonial Theater is in need of repair. It was found the stage is slightly uneven and will need to be repaired before any performances can take place. Uh, right now, I'd be looking for a, a motion to authorize the city manager to identify available fun- funds not to exceed fifty thousand dollars and bring a transfer request back to the city council for approval. Motion by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Susie. Uh, uh, further discussion on this matter? I guess my question, right, go right, oh, sorry. Who is speaking up?
I did.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Counselor Hamel if that is the amount that is needed, or is there additional things that we need to look at?
Oh, well, that is the amount for the repair of the stage. It should be under the fifty. But uh, there are other items on the Canal Street side uh, that we'd be looking to purchase uh, such as furniture and blinds. Uh, but I have not received an estimate on that, so.
Okay, all right. Uh, is that something you would desire to do?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, given this situation is, you know, let's finish it. I, I have viewed this stage, it does need repair. Um, and I think that there was a couple of other things that were mentioned that if we could get a price on it, I, I'd like to see the entire project finished.
So Counselor Haynes, are you suggesting an amendment um, to increase the dollar amount that the city manager should look to identify?
Fifty K more.
Yes, could we make it a hundred thousand?
So Counselor Haynes offers a friendly amendment um, to this. Uh, so it, the, does, does the amendment have a second? Seconded by Counselor Cheney, is there any discussion on the amendment which would now the motion would now read, it's a move to authorize the city manager to identify available funds not to exceed one-hundred thousand dollars and bring a transfer request back to the council for approval? Uh, uh, I'll defer to the city manager at this point.
Uh, I certainly will defer to the wish of the council. I would prefer to leave this into two separate categories. This one is kind of an emergency fix that we want to get done now so we can open the Colonial, and I'm really trying to identify funds that will remain within this fiscal year budget that maybe we haven't expended due to certain COVID programs, or maybe, you know, you know, the winter wasn't as bad and we've got some winter funds that we can find with dollars before they're going to lapse into fund balance at the end of this year. The other are for new purchases that I agree that are needed, but I think we're identifying, you know, those costs and those particular, you know, needs versus the wants. What do we need to buy right now to make the theater functional? And are there some nice to haves that we want to add in later on? I think some of those funds could come from non-capital reserve or other areas outside of the budget. So that's why we, you know, I'm not saying those things aren't needed, Counselor Haynes, absolutely. But I think this is trying to scrounge together some dollars this budget year before they expend. We've got a pretty good handle on things because we're basically through the end of April. So we're 10 months through the year and that would be my druthers and I'll identify existing dollars and then we can work towards the other list once it's fine tuned. But that's just my request.
Counselor Haynes?
Mr. Mayor, is it possible to withdraw that amendment at this time?
I believe that it is.
Okay, I so wish.
All right. So that amendment is withdrawn. Okay, I think we can just proceed with the original amendment here then. So is there any further discussion in regards to the original motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Well, that is six votes in the affirmative. That motion passes. Number 21E, which is a request to change the designated no parking area on Wentworth Cove. Scott, I'm not sure, would you like to give us a view from 10,000 feet on this to get us started and we'll see where it leads?
I'd be happy to. So there's a number of moving parts here. First and foremost, I know Counselor Felch was approached a number of weeks back or months ago now with some concerns that Attorney Nato had referenced tonight representing some specific property owners who were concerned about a lot of parking in both sides and approaching and possible public safety issues and folks who maybe shouldn't have the rights to be using the beach, using the beach and who's enforcing it. So Counselor Felch brought that forward and the no parking came in. Subsequent to that, there were it was determined there were a lot more neighbors than just the ones represented by Attorney Nato. And folks who, as again you heard tonight, live a distance away who really need an opportunity to get down there and park. You know, not as a luxury, just more or less as a necessity in certain cases to be able to utilize that beach area which they have deeded rights to. And I forget the exact number, but I think it's somewhere between 40 and 50 properties have deeded beach rights in there. Attorney Nato did uncover something through research today and sent me something from our city ordinances going back to the seventies that did say that both sides of Wentworth Cove on that stretch were no parking. And it very well may have worked fine for 50 years or longer. The interesting thing was it was never signed in all those years. There were never any signs there. So I don't know what has changed on the use in the neighborhood over the years, but you know, whether it's COVID or whether it's just a changeover of property owners and people wanting to access the water. You know, we see that. So certainly to make that no parking on both sides is to the benefit of some immediate butters, but certainly not a number of people who want to be able to access and come down with blankets or coolers or swim toys or whatever else might be there. So you know, it's not going to please everybody, but I think a happy medium is what Counselor Felch has requested here to to make some parking available for those folks with regard to people from Wolfboro or Alton coming in and using what is a private beach. That's really an association matter to be addressing. That's not a city matter to be policing who comes in onto that beach area. I I would assume there must be some kind of a homeowners or a beach association for insurance or maintenance or some other small things or just the liability under it. I could be wrong. But as an association, they could certainly look to, you know, issue those rubber wristbands that you got to have a wristband to come onto the association beach and you only get it if you're one of the 40 whatever properties who are allowed to do that. But I think there's solutions that they can do to help police something that should be a valued asset to the neighborhood and everybody should be looking to have it only used by those who are legally entitled to do it. So I think we need to separate that issue out from the purely parking and accessibility. And again, I understand that things might have changed over years and this whenever was an issue before. But I believe, you know, from common sense would say there needs to be some reasonable access for folks to park and be able to reason will use something that they have deeded beach rights to.
Thank you, Scott.
And I certainly defer to Counselor Felch as well to chime in on his thoughts to it because he is the counselor who's kind of been in the weeds on this a little bit.
So let's move this to the discussion phase and then we can do that. That's okay. So right now I'd be looking for a motion to move the city council void all existing designated no parking areas on Wentworth Cove Road and designate the east side which is the odd numbered side of the road. A no parking area from the northern edge of the Summit Ave right of way to the southern edge of Woodvale Road right of way. So made by Counselor Felch. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Cheney. Further discussion on this motion? I'd look to you, Counselor Felch, to start things off.
Yeah, I'd just say there are 44 owners of that beach rights. They all pay taxes on them. They definitely need a place to park, especially somebody that's got children, a handicapped, et cetera. Also, if you make no parking on both sides, then your landscapers and people working on the properties don't have a place to park. So this is a happy medium, hopefully making the waterfront properties happier because they won't be parking in front of their houses and have a place for them to park on the opposite side of the road.
Well, isn't this so there would be no parking along the edge of the property that sits on the waterfront, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Counselor Hamel?
Thank you. We made a decision last time and now we're relooking at this. My concern is if you have no parking on all the homes on the lakeside side of the property, you're shifting the parking to the other side. So that means that the lakeside will have places for their guests and visitors and that there. But the other side may not. I don't know. I just have a problem with this. I I just don't want to see this coming back in another three weeks. Have we notified all the property owners on that whole area?
Let me add to that.
Sure.
Also, one other issue, if we have parking on both sides of that road, it would be an emergency vehicle hazard to be able to get emergency vehicles down that road. So that's one of the other reasons to have no parking on one side. If you remember right, he did say that the original was no parking on both sides. So we're kind of.
My question is, have we sent a letter to all these residents? Because we're hearing tonight that a lot of them didn't hear nothing about this.
Well, I had a meeting with some of the owners, 15 to 20 of them there. They've been communicating back and forth. And the problem we had the first time was Attorney Nato made comment that people weren't notified. Well, apparently it was only her clients that were notified and not the actual property owners of the beach rights.
Well, if they have an association, then has the city sent a letter to the association?
They don't have an association.
Huh?
There's no official association. They're all actually owners of the property.
This wasn't something that the city was driving, Counselor Hamel. So it wasn't on us. It was a ward counselor got a request and then when something changed, other folks came in and said, you know, we need an opportunity and we didn't know this was happening, but it wasn't something that the city was initiating originally.
Okay, I can understand it could be a problem there with with the parking and all that. And like Tony said, you do no parking on both sides if it's emergency vehicles. But I have a problem if they, all of them haven't been notified.
Well, weren't they notified? Wasn't both sides, was it just not enforced? That both sides were not no parking? Isn't that the research that Attorney Nato uncovered?
It was actually never posted, no parking.
But it was always a no parking both sides of the street? Is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, going back to what she said today, which, you know, is accurate. It's going back to the seventies. It was there somewhere in our city ordinances. A lot of the no parking regulations fell off of the city books and we're in the process of reconstructing some of those things. So that's why it wasn't in current documentation, but going back to 1975 document that she sent me today. It was listed as no parking on both sides for, again, coming up on almost 50 years now. With no signs, no signage ever. And I guess no problems up until recently. And that just could be because there's a turnover in the neighborhood and more people are taking the opportunity to enjoy what it is that they have the rights to.
So one question I have, if looking at the map layout, residents are looking to access parcel number 16.
Mm-hmm.
That we want to prevent parking on that side of the road. Which means that you could park all the way up the street, we'll say, from Wentworth Cove to Woodvale Drive. You'd still have to cross Wentworth Cove Road to access the parcel. So I guess my question is, wouldn't it be safer if you had no parking on the other side of the road? So people could walk along the shore side of the road not have to cross Wentworth Cove in order to access parcel 16?
Can I address that?
Sure.
So actually, they would be walking down the other side of the road because all the cars would be parked on the opposite side. Plus, as you heard, most of the complainants from before are waterfront property owners that don't own any part of that beach rights. So we're moving them away from their properties. Trying to appease both sides.
Yeah, but then they've got their back to oncoming traffic as opposed to walking towards oncoming traffic.
Well, it depends on which direction they're coming from. Some of them have.
I just assume people walking, parking, walking towards the beach, but I guess you're right. I don't guess you're right. You're right.
Yeah, and they'd walk on the beach side versus walking where the cars are.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Counselor Susie, go right ahead.
Tony, just one clarification. So you're telling me that the people who have the beach rights because they have the property on the water don't want the cars parking on their side? Is that right?
No, the people on the water side have their own beaches. They don't beach right.
They don't like the cars parking.
They don't like the cars parked in front of their houses.
That's what it comes right down to.
Because if you remember before, they were talking about parking on their lawns, et cetera, et cetera.
But it's okay for the cars to park on the other side of the street? According to them.
I'm sure there might be some people over there that don't want it, but most of them have the beach rights.
Okay.
So Tony, one more time, this solves what problem?
Good point. It solves the problem of the fact that we had no sides and we have people that own beachfront beach property. And they'll have a place to park.
Did I see another hand up there from counselors? Counselor Littman?
I guess I would say that going back to what Counselor Hamel's comment is before we wrote on this, we may be better off letting it, making sure that the communication has occurred. I think, you know, just having been on the council for a number of years that when these situations come up, you know, you think everybody's aware of it and then you find out later that they're not. So you know, I don't disagree with that. Counselor Felch has come up with the reasonable solution. We don't necessarily understand all the nuances because we don't live there. So maybe just leave it on the table for one more meeting to make sure that everybody's aware of this issue.
I think that's a wise idea, Counselor Littman, having been through a similar situation just at the airport recently where we made a decision to the runway approaches. And then when the public was notified, they were unhappy with that new approach. We had a big hearing and then we had to flip it back to the original way. I think slowing down, pumping the brakes a little bit might be prudent here. Making sure everyone is notified. Make sure we are in fact solving a problem that's not creating another problem or just that's going to be back before us in a couple of months.
Well, I can say I've talked to at least half of the people that own the beach rights and I know they have been talking to everybody. They've gotten an email link together. They're talking amongst themselves. So that's there's probably 44 people right there that know. I mean, it's up to you. If you want to table it, how are we going to notify them?
Well, we could put a notice in the paper.
I mean, you only heard from people tonight that want it this way.
Yeah, and I don't doubt that they want it this way. It's I think we have to be satisfied that we've completed our due diligence to put everybody on notice that has an interest in this before we make a decision and find ourselves revisiting it in a couple of weeks. Certainly, if we were to make a decision come May, no doubt the signage would be put up shortly thereafter. It's still you know, we're abutting the summer season. You know, I think we can still do it and accommodate those that want parking.
All right, let's table it and.
So is there a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Hamel. Movements to table are non-debatable. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
No.
I'm sorry, did you say yes or no?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
No.
Four votes in the affirmative. That item number 21E is tabled. Moving along, yeah, oh, yes, Counselor Hamel.
I'd like to ask that the city sends a letter out to these addresses and notify them of what is being discussed so that everybody knows.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Put it on the agenda. And also, would it be appropriate to put a a notice in the La Conia Daily Sun as well? City manager?
Yeah, we're happy to do some kind of a letter. I think some of these folks are weekend people or seasonal to some extent and maybe not around. I think there's probably some folks who are still on this Zoom call and if somebody maybe could email my office with a list, I mean, someone that's got to know who's got deeded beach rights. I'm not sure the city has a list of who the the specific property owners are in that neighborhood. So if somebody in on this call who is part of this association could send some details my way to help us facilitate a proper mailing list, that probably would be the quickest way to do it. Or Counselor Felch, if you could help facilitate that.
Yeah, Sandra is on right now. If you wanted to talk to her, I think she can take care of that, which she has been doing.
All right. So maybe you can connect with Sandra and then
I will do that.
List. And I think a direct mailing to everybody that goes out this week would be the easiest and cleanest way to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hamel.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving along to 21F right now, which is city employees covered by the wage and compensation plan. This was submitted by the city manager. Would you like to take this one as well?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I mentioned during my budget presentation, we have four collective bargaining units and two of them are under very basic one-year agreements because of the COVID times and unknown financing. Um, very basic one-year agreements because of the COVID times and unknown finances or a number of things. Um, we went with a one-year uh contract as opposed to the more standard three-year contracts we have typically done. The only change in those contracts, other than some wordsmithing, was into the cost of living adjustment. So this is a proposed change to the wage and compensation plan. For city employees who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. And it mirrors that effective July fifth, twenty twenty-one, those employees would have a one point eight percent cost of living adjusted. To the wage and comp plan for their particular position. Um, so that's my recommendation to you. You do not have to act on this tonight if you do not want to, although it's a very simple. One liner, if you will, so I certainly would encourage you, if you're ready to take action on it tonight. You do have up to thirty days. If you don't act upon this within thirty days, um, then it would go into effect by default, so to speak. So. Not a requirement for tonight, but certainly it does mirror what you approve for other groups, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of the city manager before we consider a motion? Seeing none, uh. The proposed motion is a is to approve the wage and compensation plan as presented. So made by Counsel Hamel, seconded by Counsel Haynes. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yeah.
Yes.
Counsel Litman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Hamel?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
But six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, counselors.
Item twenty-one G, which is a request to appoint Leonard Minor as Ward Two moderator. For a term expiring at the end of November twenty twenty-one, the current Ward Two moderator submitted his resignation on February nineteenth. Twenty twenty-one. Uh, we're looking for a motion right now. To appoint Leonard Minor as Ward Two moderator. For a term expiring at the end of November twenty twenty-one, so made. By Counsel Susie and seconded by Counsel Felch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yeah.
Yes.
Counsel Litman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Hamel?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Moving right along to number twenty-two on your agenda. Second reading of the resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh five relative to a proposed land swap. And boundary line adjustment adjustment. Between Antaeus Holdings Limited and the city of Laconia. So uh I think we. Perhaps remember this from last. Meeting. In which we uh which this matter was discussed. So this is a proposal for a boundary line adjustment and minor land swap for parcels. Of equivalent size totaling less than six hundred square feet. A property is located in the area of Railroad Avenue, which runs between um. Blizzard showroom and Scott Everett's new development. If approved, the proposal will. Neaten up the boundary line in terms of laying out the sidewalk. And provide parking for the new development to allow it to be all on city-owned land. Legal counsel has advised the city council follow the process outlined in chapters one eighty-three dash seven. One eighty-three dash eight of the city's code to declare a portion of the city's property. As surplus property, please note that a two-thirds vote of the council is required for any vote relative to this matter. This report was submitted by Scott Myers, the city manager. Be looking to for three motions here. One is a moo, a motion to waive a reading of resolution twenty twenty-one. Dash oh five in its entirety and to read by title only, so made by Counsel Cheney, seconded by Counsel Haynes. Any further discussion seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Litman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Hamel?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. We're looking for a second motion to move a second reading of resolution twenty twenty-one. Dash oh five relative to the proposed boundary line adjusts. Adjustment and land swap between Antaeus Holdings Limited and the city of Laconia. So made by Counseler. Felch, seconded by Counsel Hamel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yeah.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Litman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
For Hamel?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. And finally, are we looking for a motion to move to approve a resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh five relative to the proposed land boundary line? Adjustment and land swap between Antaeus Holdings Limited and the city of Laconia and declaration of a portion of the city's property map. Property at tax map three sixty-seven dash one eight nine dash two four as surplus, so made by Counsel Felch. Seconded by Counsel Hamel. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Litman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Hamel?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
But six votes in the affirmative and that motion passes. I don't know, item, agenda item twenty-two B, which is. Discussion and guidance on a temporary traffic order for the Motorcycle Week event to be held June twelfth, twenty twenty-one, June twentieth, twenty twenty-one. City staff is requesting guidance from the council pertaining to a temporary traffic order for Motorcycle Week. Which would potentially include centerline parking. In twenty twenty Motorcycle Week happened in name only and the council did not approve any temporary traffic orders for the event. Um, Scott, I ask you just to briefly go over this if you would. Just a little historical historic context?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did attach just as a template the twenty nineteen temporary traffic order. Uh, was called for one-way traffic, motorcycles only, centerline parking. Um. It did identify a a small no parking area down towards the end of the. Boardwalks kind of in the area of Tower Street to New Hampshire Ave in the early morning hours, and I believe that's where the um. The the rally stages, some of the rides and the rides are typically out of there by ten, ten thirty in the morning, so that is accounted for. Um, this traffic order also um shows the closure of. Tower Street for a portion of a certain day for the motorcycle hill climb. Uh, I believe I heard that the application for this street climb, the hill climb. Just came into city offices this afternoon, so we'll certainly confirm that up or confirm that and make sure that that's um. Yeah, what the date is that's occurring. So all these dates obviously would be adjusted for twenty twenty-one. Um, under number fourteen, we'd also want to ensure. That the numbered parking spaces um for progressive and indoor AARP. Are the correct ones and or being utilized, um, because we don't have confirmation. Um, as of yet, but from city staff perspective, we have no objections to um. Having the standard Motorcycle Week traffic flow down there and having these uh temporary changes instituted. I did reach out to Jim Ah, Morash, um, owner of the Mount Washington. Uh, just because there's usually some dates that he might have charter buses coming in or school trips and. Because of where we are with COVID this year, he is not aware of anything that is on his books that is going to need buses getting down. Or any kind of special assistance at this point. I let him know that if something. Were to change and you were to book something, just, you know, let us know. Those are usually. Early or or mid-morning, mid, you know, departures type of things, so we could certainly work with them to get a bus down, but at this point. Um, he was all set and had no concerns, and that's usually the one property owner that. Um, you know, will raise a question or two or just give us a date or two, and this year he seems to be all set. So um. You know, this is the template. Staff and I are ready to to plug in the appropriate things and work with the association to make sure we've identified. Um, the proper dates and and locations and everything.
Uh, that, thank you, thank you, Scott, for the um overview of this. Uh, by all, for for all intents and purposes, on uh twenty nineteen during the twenty nineteen event, this. Uh, traffic pattern, traffic plan, if you will, worked well, correct?
Yes, this is the one that has been in place for several years. I think the only change that we've gotten away from is there's a. A a slight difference to how the traffic used to run from Friday night through like Sunday morning or Monday morning and then. Public horse crews had to get down there and and change something. I I a little blurry on some of the details. Counsel Hamel made them know better, but. I think at least for the past couple of years where we've had it, we've made this one traffic order go into effect of the attire event, and it seems to have worked well.
All right, so this would, this would allow, I I mean, uh, direction. If we were to give you some direction based on this document here, it would begin to prepare to proceed. In the same fashion as we did in twenty nineteen. Um. And it would be able to accommodate if and when. We took any restraints off the number of vendors that we might be um issuing permits to along the boardwalk.
Yes, this would have no impact on the number of vendors. I mean, the vendors, um, as we stand right now, as at this moment. You know, it would be spaced a little more, but this is really dealing with um parking vehicles on the streets, the direction of traffic flow. The limitations of this being motorcycles only, uh, the couple of spaces for progressive and potentially AARP. Identifying the ability from the association's po- uh, point of view to. Put out cones and blocks and spaces in the early morning on the days they have rides leaving from um. Lakeside Avenue, and this would accommodate the Tower Hills uh, the street, the the hill climb as well on on Tower Street. Um, so we would work with them to make sure we've captured everything, plug in the proper dates to make it uh valid for. Twenty twenty-one, and if it's your consensus, we would do that and we would have that on the agenda. Um, for May tenth for a formal vote, but at least you would be sending a strong message tonight that it's your intent. If it is to have a normal Motorcycle Week traffic pattern down on Lakeside Avenue.
Okay, great. Um, Counsel Felch?
Yes. Um. It appears that hotels and cottages are booked solid for the week, so we're gonna have a lot of people here. So if we're trying to make things safe for Motorcycle Week, we need to make sure we have. As many outdoor activities as possible. Even doctors agree that it's safer to be outside. So as for vendors. Um, if we have so many people and we cut our vendors in half. Then we're multiplying the number of people that are going to be in those vendors by two.
Counsel Felch, with all due respect, what's this got to do with the parking plan?
This, I talked to manager Myers earlier in the week. This was supposed to be on the agenda this week. He told me I could bring it up during this section, so I will. Thank you. So. If we're, if we're putting our vendors in half, we're creating more people in each vendor. Um, as of May seventh, executive order number fifty-two will expire, which mandates for restaurants and bars. Will open up, open them up a hundred percent. And without beer tents, that forces everyone inside being crowded together instead of outside where it is safer. With Motorcycle Week, seven weeks away. Most everyone that wants to be vaccinated should be. We have heard from over a hundred people with ninety-five percent of them in favor of Motorcycle Week with no restrictions. So since I represent the people. I would like to make a motion to have one hundred percent vendors, beer tents, centerline parking. One-way traffic and everything the same as it was for two thousand nineteen for Motorcycle Week. From June fourth to the twentieth.
Counsel Hamel?
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so.
Well, hasn't hasn't been seconded, so I'd be looking for a second. Counsel Cheney is offering the second. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Hamel?
Uh, I I'm totally in favor of the temporary traffic order for two thousand nineteen. But uh, I'm not in favor of a hundred percent vendors.
Counsel Susie?
Only in favor of all the traffic situation at the same time, since the state is going to be opening up restaurants and everything else a hundred percent. The governor has taken away the the mask requirements. And the people that attend this this rally Motorcycle Week, we're all adults, our common sense. I I'm, open it up is the way I would go.
Counsel Litman?
So I can support the traffic pattern. Um, I do think that we did hear from people who had concerns. While they may not have been the majority of people that reached out, there's, I don't know of an event that's large scale, whether it be. Uh, going to the Red Sox or or going to the Bruins or other things where they just say no holds bar, just go for it. Particularly with, you know, we've just had to have um. Our public schools um put kids in quarantine uh due to ten cases in the schools. It's not about whether you go to the event or not, or whether you're vaccinated or not. It's about um the level of risk that you bring into the community, and there's an acceptable level of risk, and I think certainly the. Um, you know, the governor um did not say, don't um. Uh, consider um public health measures. In fact, he encouraged that. Um, and, you know, I think that. We should, community and our success as a community has been about give and take. And for us to just go all one way based on one. Segment of the community, a very important segment of the community, without consideration for those who can't protect themselves. It's not just about people. Coming to the event and leaving the event. It circulates in the community, and I think, you know, as much as. You can cite statistics or not cite statistics, the reality is you just have to look around the country and around the world that this thing is not over for us. It's certainly, um, there's an increased level of risk that we can take, which is, I think, opening up the event to the level that's already been proposed. Opening up the center parking, there may be some other things we can do, um, but I think just. Um, basically going full board with no. Consideration whatsoever for the rest of the community that may not participate in the event but would be affected by what gets left behind. I think that's wrong.
Thank you, Counsel Litman. Counsel Felch?
Yes, um, let's not forget that this is an outside event. We're gonna have people here. People aren't. Not gonna be here just because we have half the number of vendors or because we don't have beer tents. We're giving them stuff to do to separate from each other. Plus Meredith is completely opening up. They're going one hundred percent. You've got fairs and. Craft fairs and everything that's going hundred percent, your restaurants, your bars, everything. There's no reason why we shouldn't open things up for this event.
Well, I think we've heard, um, if I couldn't, Mr. Mayor, I think.
Yeah, please do.
I think we have heard from a segment of the community that doesn't want it to be full bear, and I think there's, you know, public health reasons why. Full bear, no, no. No restraints whatsoever is, you know, people have a liberty to participate in what they want to. They can go for a ride. They can. Go for a meal, they can do what they want, but, you know, when you start to congregate people. Um, with drinking in a in a tent and other spots, just encouraging it more than we need to. It can have a very good time um here without going uh no holds bar. And I think that's a part of the community that's not comfortable with that, and I think they should have some. You know, we're going ninety-five percent the way what people want it. Why do we have to just ignore those who are concerned about? Um, their their personal health in the community. I just don't understand why we can't have some mod- modum. Of consideration for those who um are concerned about their risks.
Counsel Felch?
Yeah, I must say I was elected to represent the people. And the P, it would be ninety-five percent of the people, not the five percent. Um. I'm representing the ninety-five percent of the people I've heard from.
Yeah, and I think as a community, um, you know, consideration for those people who can't protect themselves. And I think that's, that's not fair to them. And I think it's just to not just represent those who contact us, but the entire community.
Um, let's see, manager, can you, um, you, you have pretty good data at your fingertips. Can you give us some update on, um, what's going on in the state as far as vaccinations, um?
Ken, give me one second, Mr. Mayor. So I'm on the state of New Hampshire, um, website under the COVID nineteen page, under the news tab from Department Health and Human Services, which puts out a, um, a daily update on everything from cases to, um, vaccines to by county, by community, whatever. So the most recent date, I was hoping there would be one out today because the last one that came out, um, and I'm guessing it'll be due tomorrow, that I find particularly useful is the COVID nineteen vaccine allocation update, and this is from April twentieth, so it's, it's six days old. Probably the next updated report will be due out tomorrow. What I find most interesting with this report is, um, they break down the age groups, um, by typically, you know, ten-year chunks. And I know I've heard Counselor, you know, fellas say in the past, well, we can't count, you know, kids in our population of our one point three million because they don't come to Motorcycle Week. Um, I think the flip could be said for the older population. So of our seventy-five-plus population, and again, this is from Department of Health and Human Services as of April twentieth, fifty point seven percent of seventy-five and older have had, um, both doses, so half of the seventy-five plus. It goes up to sixty-one percent for the sixty-five to seventy-four group. So if you say the sixty-five and older are typically not our target market for folks coming to Motorcycle Week, with a few exceptions, I think most of us would agree that our group is running from here it says age sixteen, because that's the age you can get, but let's call it from age eighteen to sixty-five is probably our target market for people who come to Motorcycle Week. So in the groups, and they listed here as sixteen to twenty-nine, because again, that's the age you can get it. Sixteen to twenty-nine, we have seven point one percent of the population has received both doses. Thirty, thirty to thirty-nine, it's thirteen point six percent of the population, both doses. Forty to forty-nine, sixteen point one percent. And then fifty to sixty-four is twenty-one point five percent. They also list of those same groups, how many have one doses, and I think this is important because if you look at this data and say, okay, within four weeks from now, because that's how they're scheduled in the appointments, whether it was Moderna or Pfizer, you're on a four-week schedule, we can look at the one-dose percentages, and that would tell us very approximately how many people would have had both doses. So again, the sixteen to twenty-nine age group, we have twenty-two percent of the population has one dose in, so we can extrapolate that a month from now, that's gonna be the amount that has two. The thirty to thirty-nine-year-olds at thirty-four percent, the forty to forty-nine-year-olds at forty-four percent, and fifty to sixty-four-year-olds at fifty-seven percent. Um, so that's, that's the state's data of where we are with one and two doses. And again, the guidance was fourteen days after your second dose is when you're, um, believed to have as full a protection as you're gonna get from, from the vaccine, and we know that they're, they're running ninety-five percentish effective, which is a very great number. Nothing is a hundred percent foolproof, so, um, I wish we had the report that's coming out tomorrow available today, uh, but we do know the J and J vaccine has been paused for a week. And we do know that countrywide, the rate has actually slowed this past week with the amount of shots being given from about three million a day to about two point eight million a day, and again, that's across the country. New Hampshire's done a great job of getting the vaccine that it's allocated out in, in, into communities and into people's arms, um, and that I can say with first-hand knowledge. So, um, happy to stop there and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, um, thanks, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more point?
Certainly, certainly, yeah.
You know, uh, typical Motorcycle Week without, um, the COVID, you know, asking people to put up with some extra traffic, asking people to pick up with some extra noise, asking people who, you know, don't participate in the event to, to be inconvenienced to somewhat, to allow the rest of the community to benefit, which is very important to the overall economy. Have no problem asking that, but we're really asking people here to, um, who have health concerns to, to, to be totally not considered, and I do think that we have some responsibility above all else is safety. Um, and, um, we can't guarantee safety, right? There's no, all we can do is minimize risk a bit here, um, based on what the guidelines are, are not going to be, and I just say, please have some respect for, for those people who don't wanna take the, as much risk as, you know, all, all in, no, no constraints whatsoever. You know, I, I understand people want to exercise their personal liberty, which they should be entitled to do, but not at the expense of someone else's health. And it's not just about just stay away. It really isn't. That's not how the disease works.
Thank you, C- Counsel Lippman. Go right ahead, Counsel Fouch.
Just one quick thing. If, if you have concerns or you have health issues, wouldn't you have already gotten the shot?
So what about children, um, that are under sixteen years of age? You know, we, we're talking about some of the kids at risk, and where you're starting to see things around the country is in the the, the under eighteen-year-old group, you know, have some consideration for the schools, nothing else.
Actually, I believe schools will be out by Motorcycle Week.
No.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be close, uh, certainly. You know, I, I, I personally feel right along, even going back to last year, this is really a data-driven decision in so many respects. Um, there are a number of variables that, um, um, it'd be nice if we had, um, more solid numbers, more number, numbers that were more convincing that we would be resilient or more resilient, um, to what's going on with the, uh, with the pandemic. Uh, as I've said right along, I, I feel my primary responsibility or our primary responsibility should be public health. Um, you can't have a, a good economy if you don't have a healthy, um, population. Um, I think one, that's one A, one B is certainly our local economy and local businesses that depend on a strong season, so it's always going to be a bit of a, be a bit of a balancing um, endeavor here to, to try and figure out what we should, what we should do. Um, I'm looking at these numbers. I'm no expert in public health, but even if we were to double many of these vaccination rates, it still seems to be in my mind, it's not high enough. I, I'd like to see a higher vaccination rate to lower, to, to mitigate risk even more. Um, I think we should be aware of certainly what's gone on in some of the states around the country. Uh, reading up on Michigan right now, uh, is very disconcerting, and some of the evidence that's coming out of there. What I, what I would like to do right now is for us to perhaps consider calling a a special, uh, meeting if possible sometime within the next seven to ten days solely to discuss this. Hold on, Tony.
Yeah, can I, can I just?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. This is gonna save a lot of time. This is gonna save time.
Uh, look, Tony, no.
Let me say what I'm gonna say. I want to amend my motion. We all seem to be in agreement with the parking in the one way. I'll amend my motion to remove the vendors and beer tents and have everything parking and one-way traffic as nine, as two thousand nineteen. There's already been a vo- a motion made and seconded, so it's something we have to vote on, so let me amend my motion and vote on the parking.
Tony, uh, uh, Tony, you could, you can do that, uh, no problem, but you were insistent on bringing this issue up and demanding you bring it up, and we gave you that, I gave you that opportunity to certainly address it, and it certainly did so. So, um, you know, uh, my concern is I'm not convinced that this is the uh, appropriate time to say we move back to a hundred percent right now. Uh, I'm just not convinced the da- the data, the data is not supporting it as far as I concern.
So let me.
Tony, 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 relax. So what I'm going to do is suggest that we have, uh, a, a call, a special meeting a week to ten days from now to once again solely take a look at this issue on the agenda and to analyze the data and see if that's the appropriate time to move it from a fifty percent up to something higher and to consider whether um, beer tents at some capacity makes sense. Right now, I don't think the numbers support that. They don't convince me. I realize there's a motion on the table, uh, but I think that's where I stand, and I think that that would be a prudent way to take a look at data. And we're all dying to blow the economy open and, and get back to some degree of normalcy. But I agree with Counsel Lippman that public health, uh, the people who are left behind here, the people who are uh, still the most vulnerable people in our, in our community, we should be concerned about.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion.
Are you gonna withdraw the motion, or are you gonna amend it?
I'm gonna amend it.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to amend it to remove vendors and beer tents from the motion and be just about centerline parking and one-way traffic the same as we've do it, did it in two thousand nineteen, which was what this originally was about.
So it sounds like, Tony, um, you've withdrawn your motion and now you're, you're amending your motion. So is there a second on the amended portion of the motion? So made by Counsel Lippman. Is there any further discussion on that? Counsel Susie.
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. Does that mean the other, the other part of Tony's motion will not be coming back this year, or does it come later?
No, it can, it will, can still come back before the council.
Okay, I think your question, he's withdrawn, i- i- if he withdraws the motion, he certainly can bring it at a future meeting, it seems to me, yes. Just not on the table right now.
Okay, thank you. That's, I just wanted to know what we were voting on, to be honest.
Thanks for keeping us focused, Counsel Susie. Any further discussion on Counsel Fouch's motion that's on the table? Seeing none, uh, go right ahead, Counsel Lippman.
I, I appreciate, um, Counsel Fouch, um, modifying it to something we all can agree to, I think. Thank you.
Mayor.
Uh, yes, Counsel Hamel.
Okay, I'm like Counsel Susie. I wanna make sure on this. So we are voting on the temporary traffic order that was in place with two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, what we're doing is we're asking, if I may, we're asking the city council, uh, the city manager, excuse me, to draft up a parking order, uh, similar, uh, to the one done in twenty nineteen, which was obviously pre-pandemic and would be at a hundred percent capacity, if you will, something more.
With all the proper dates and stuff like that.
With the pro- with the proper dates, yes.
And that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. Or we just approving it, and he's gonna make the adjustments.
Correct.
Okay.
Why don't we do, why don't we do that? I, I think in terms of the, I think there's a strong consensus to allow the parking just to fill in the right things that the manager needs to do to make it twenty twenty-one. I'd be, I'd be in favor of moving it along so we can deal with other issues at a future meeting.
Uh, I, I would agree. Let's, let's, uh, I, I think we should empower the city manager to draft it as he see fit based on the, the template of twenty nineteen. I don't, I think it needs to come back to be voted on. I would look for a motion to allow him to do that.
That's the motion I made. It's already been made and seconded.
You're a tough counselor to keep up with tonight, Counsel Fouch. I'd ask the counsel, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney.
Yes.
Counsel Susie.
Yes.
Counsel Lippman.
Yes.
Counsel Haines.
Yes.
Counsel Hamel.
Yes.
Counsel Fouch.
Yes.
That's, um, six votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. Thanks for your patience, counselors. And, uh, counselors, I, I, I would like to consider at some point here, uh, reconvening, uh, the city council in a special meeting. Uh, Scott, do you have a date? Should we go out a week, or should, it would be, would ten days be more appropriate based on maybe some timeline from some, um, data coming out of the state or the CDC?
If, if the state is consistent with having the vaccination updates and a Tuesday report, which I believe they are, uh, maybe we look to target something for, um, Wednesday, May fifth, or Thursday, May sixth. That would give us, uh, a, a week, a couple of days.
Counsel Lippman, do you have a question on that?
Why don't we wait till we see what officially comes out on the seventh as the guidance? That might, that might give us some insights that we don't have on the fifth or the sixth. Do we do it on, we do it the following?
If, if that's, if that's the case, we've got a regular meeting on Monday, May tenth, so if the guidance changes, the governor's gonna bring it forward, we're gonna come, are gonna come out May seventh, which is a Friday. We can just schedule something on the agenda for general Motorcycle Week discussion regarding vendors, beer tents, and updated state best practices.
You start, we can start earlier to accommodate, um, you know, full discussion.
We are starting at six o'clock with the school budget presentation.
Could we push that off a meeting because?
They, they, they've got, um, they really, they asked for that like two months ago because that ties into when they have to extend, uh, teacher contracts, and that's an important date for them.
So let's meet Tuesday.
Tuesday, what, what date? Are you talking about Tuesday, the eleventh?
Yeah.
I'd much rather have it on that Monday. I think we could get it in. I mean, look how much discussion we've had tonight on all kinds of stuff.
That's fine. People wanna go later, that's fine. Well, I just, I, in terms of, uh, earlier than six o'clock, just not doable on my part, I gotta work.
No, I think we'll be fine.
Put this as the first item on the agenda, get it out of the way, and then go to the school budget.
Oh, the school budget's gonna be.
School, school starts at six.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's, um, I wanted to get to it a little bit sooner. Um, I certainly, you know, my hopes, uh, uh, have been that we'd have really solid data in, in, in an ideal situation would allow us to, to ramp up Motorcycle Week, and I would like to get that information, that data sooner, which would allow us to make that decision. Um, maybe it's just not going to work. Maybe perhaps we can, I, I really don't wanna push it into Tuesday, the eleventh. I guess I'd like to keep it on the tenth. Um, Scott, and, and move it to one of the first things we talk about right out of the gate. Um, okay.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry about that, yeah. Yes, go ahead, Counsel Hamel.
Yes, um, not to throw a log on the fire, but, uh, you know, these are all, uh, New Hampshire statistics, and, um, there'll be a lot of visitors from all the New England states. So I don't know if we can get a little information from those states too, or do you just wanna keep it New Hampshire? I mean, they'll be coming from New York, they'll be coming from everywhere.
That's a, that's a, that's a very good question. I think maybe we can look at, um, why don't we take a look at New England data to start, okay?
I mean, that would be where most of them would come from, I would think.
I, 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 I think so as well. I mean, if we have, uh, we have data that's overwhelmingly positive coming from the New England states, particularly New Hampshire, then I think maybe we're, you know, w- we're in a good position to revisit this decision.
Cause I, I believe right now still, uh, the Canadian border's still closed, so, uh, I don't know if they're thinking about opening that, but our visitors from the north may not be able to come.
Yeah.
New Jersey and New York, because that's another large group that comes here.
Yeah.
That's another one, uh, uh, Counsel Lippman in here.
Large group that comes up is New Jersey and New York.
Yeah, um, okay, well, uh, Scott, in anticipation of that meeting, maybe that's the, the catchment area we should be looking at, right? Um, New York, New Jersey, north or east, north, north and east. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry, Counsel Haynes, go right ahead.
If we have a special meeting, is, are we going to finalize this? Are we going to have a special meeting of a special meeting of a special meeting so it goes to the day before the rally starts? I'd like to have a finality to this.
Thank you, Counsel Haynes. I certainly would, I think we'd all like to have a finality to it as well. Were to make a decision based on data today, I don't know how favorable it would be. So buying a little extra time so we can get updated and relevant data, I think would be helpful. I too don't want to go to the day before the event and think it's going to make a difference. It's not. I think a month out is probably as close as we want to cut it. So I think at some point we need to make that decision. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Counsel Haynes. Mr. Myers, yes?
Yeah, I, I would echo that statement that we need to come to a final decision and not keep hunting on it and not saying the 10th is too late, but particular for police with looking at details and if we're looking to engage out-of-town police department, if things do expand and we are adding additional, you know, stages and beer tents and that type of stuff, that's going to require additional police presence and planning time on the part of, you know, the chief and his staff. So I, I would hope wherever we end up that the 10th might be the day that we make a decision and say this is how it's going to look for 2021.
Okay. Counsel Littman?
I was wondering if the manager, I think you outlined a number of other activities that, you know, many of which would be possible to do. Could you just kind of review what other activities you already think could happen? It's just a matter that they haven't come forward to be asked. Did you review that one more time?
Yeah, I believe that they came in late this afternoon to, to planning or special events, but I think the swap meet is going, scheduled to go on, that the hill climb, I believe, came in today. All of the rides, the council already approved a while back. Anybody who was a year-round or even on a quarterly basis entertainment venue, who gets their license, that's separate just from the 10-day motorcycle week. We've been proactively contacting them and encouraging them to make sure that they're in the queue to get their license. So that would include Tower Hill Tavern, The Big House, what was known as the marketplace where the Ames had it and just sold it. And I, I'm drawing a blank on the new name there. The Nazwa, Crazy Gringo, the Looney Bin, the Boardwalk Cafe gets a license, 405, Portello's, Hector's. I mean, I think there's probably 12 or 15 entertainment venues that are some inside, some outside. And also, don't forget, the city has also been supportive of the additional dining outdoor tents, you know, that everybody scrambled to get going last year and we're still continuing to support those as far as we know right now. And some of that may change a little bit with what the governor may give as best practices. If he says, and I'm not saying he is and it's good, bad, or whatever, but if he says everything is open up 100% inside from a city, we have to look now with these outdoor tents and say, are they in people's parking lots where they put the tents up? And now therefore, if they're open 100% inside, they need those parking spaces. So therefore, the outdoor dining tent, you know, has to go now or go through a more formal approval process. So those are the iterations that we don't know sitting here today based on what may happen with the reopening committee and best practices on May 7th. So that's why I say from a planning purpose with inspections, with police, you know, the appropriate police coverage based on what is happening, those are things we need to start planning for. And I think really that May 10th date is there. But, you know, restaurants are open. We're not doing anything with restaurants. We're not doing anything with bars. They're controlled by, by state mandates right now or soon to be state best practices. So whatever's in place from the state is there, the entertainment's there, the rides, you know, the vendors to 50% capacity, you know, that's, that's what's going on. And, you know, there's, so there's that capacity outside that'll be going on top of the capacity that's going to be increasing inside more than likely.
Can we get for the 10th when we meet? Is all the things you just listed, those are all possibilities that could happen within the existing guidelines? In other words, all the things you just listed would be within bounds to happen, save the beer tents that are the extras and the extra outdoor stages. So I guess, I just want to make sure everybody has a full picture that this is much more than 2020 ever looked like.
Absolutely. So yes, all those, all those things can occur barring the state coming out and saying and putting more restrictions on, which does not seem like the direction is going. All of those things will occur. But yes, I'll compile a list of those so you have that in front of you.
I just think we need to be fully apprised of what, all the options that are available.
Okay. Are we ready to, ready to move on from, from this item?
Mm-hmm.
Refresh my recollection, did we vote on this motion?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. All right, so that concludes the agenda this evening. We will be going into a non-public session shortly. When we return from the non-public session, it will be only to adjourn the meeting. There will be no business taken up when we return from non-public, just to, we're just going to adjourn. So we're looking to go into a non-public session under RSA 91-a32 and this would be.
You're going to go letter small e, Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, small e, consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation which has been threatened in writing or filed against the body or agency or any subdivision thereof, or against any member thereof because his membership in such body or agency until the claim or litigation has been fully adjudicated or otherwise settled. So we need the motion to jump out of that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Point of, point of order, do we have to take a special vote that we're going to continue after 10 o'clock?
A good question.
Yes, you would suspend the rules to complete the non-public session. So that motion could come right now if you wanted to make that, Counsel Haynes.
Yes, I'll make the motion that we continue to be on the 10 o'clock hour.
Seconded by Counsel Felch. Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counsel Cheney. Yeah.
You got a vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Susie.
Yes.
Counsel Littman.
Yes.
Counsel Haynes.
Yes.
Counsel Hamel.
Yes.
Counsel Felch.
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative. We're going to continue. We're suspending the rules, motion to suspend the rules. And is there a vote to go into non-public right now or do we just go, Scott? I'm sorry.
So you have to have a vote, roll call vote.
So I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
I need a first and a second to go into the non-public.
So first by Counsel Littman, seconded by Counsel Hamel.
Thank you. Counselor Cheney.
Yes.
Counsel Susie.
Yes.
Counsel Littman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counsel Hamel.
Yes.
Counsel Felch.
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative. That motion passes. We'll be now moving to non-public session.
Good point.
There's the cat. It's like, come on, Tony, time to feed me. You guys are dragging this out tonight.
Yeah, she's been pretty quiet tonight.
Do you have enough for two?
Say hi.
I think we have a quorum, don't you? I, I believe we have a quorum, so.
Yep.
Uh, we're back into public session at 10:17 PM. Be a motion to seal the non-public minutes. Counsel Lippman?
Six months, please.
Sir, a second? Second by Counsel Fauch, okay? I'd ask the city manager to call the roll.
Okay, so for a few of you chiming in here, it's the motion to seal the minutes for six months. Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Fauch?
Yes.
Counsel Sucey?
Yes.
Counsel Hamel? Counsel Cheney?
Muted. He's muted.
Uh, we need one more.
We need one more.
Counsel Hayes is joining me in my office.
Okay, Counsel Haynes, motion to seal the minutes for six months?
We didn't hear anything.
I think, I think Mark's getting on Glenn's link. Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Motion to seal the minutes for six months?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, and Counsel Hamel? Counsel Cheney? Okay, so that's four votes, four votes in the.
Four votes in the affirmative, that motion passes, minutes are sealed for six months. Like to adjourn this council meeting of April 26.